So I'm going to call it order this meeting. Town council on March 11th, 7:01. Mike, take her away.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Welcome back to budget discussion nights number two out of three. Tonight, we have on our agenda, community services, which are human services, the library department and recreation, law enforcement, and then public safety. So we're gonna go, I believe in that exact order as we go through the presentation. And just like last night, I will give the overview of all of the departments and try to touch on what the major changes were identified for this year. And similar to last night, there aren't a lot of major changes. It's mostly just contractual things and sort of small dollar amounts. And what I'll do is I'll share my screen for the presentation. And then after the presentation is over, we can, you know, ask department specific questions of the departments that are here. As well as, wait, am I still on? I just got a thing that I got signed out.
You're on.
Okay, that's strange. It just said I got signed out. All right, hopefully that doesn't mean anything. Okay. So I said, I said another device logged in with the same login. So I don't know what that was about. But anyway, I'm sorry. But yeah, we'll, we'll go through the PowerPoint. And and then at the end, we can ask questions. And just like last night, too. Thank you to all the staff, department heads, division heads, and members of the Tallinn Fire Department that are joining us tonight to support the budget. So here we go. I'm gonna share my screen. Let's full screen that. Share. Okay, great. Can everybody see the PowerPoint? Okay, very good. All right, so we're starting tonight with human services. We're not, we're not doing an overview first. We're just gonna talk about the departments, starting with human services. So in this year's budget, human services is going up about 1.71% total. That's 2.12% on the payroll expenditures. And they're taking a slight operating decrease in their operating expenditures. And you can see the line items in in the the budget sheets right here. Their department consists of several staff members, the director, the assistant director, executive secretary, a caseworker, and elderly outreach worker, and various other communications accounts dues and memberships. There was a rather large decrease on the services and fees, but that was added back under program materials, and we can explain sort of what happened there. But basically, we are transferring out funds from this this area and bringing it over into program materials. So the payroll increased by $6,100. Dues and memberships increased by 1,043. There we are funding Amplify this year, which Director Bellaty can talk a little bit about that later, about what Amplify is and the program. We also moved the LPC, the Local Prevention Council grant, moved to program materials and out of this account. Other services and fees, as I mentioned, the LPC grant was moved to program materials. And so that's why the that jumped up. And training and development decreased by $50. That's again LPC grant moved it to program materials. Travel reimbursement are obviously not allowed travel going on at the moment, so decreased by $300. But also, in general, again, that 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 was $56. That was decreased, but the majority of the decrease in this account was again because things were being moved to the program material line item. So here's the program materials. We've mentioned it a few times. So all of the changes I had mentioned up to this point reflect the consolidation of the DMHAS Local Provincial Council Grant revenue of 3907 into program materials line item. And that's the things we just talked about. So we're shifting the dues and memberships, other services and fees, training and development, and travel reimbursement into that account, thereby increasing it by 3107. Also, visiting nurse decreased by 1,053. That was moved to dues and memberships for Amplify. Now we're turning to the senior center. We have a new director who's joining us tonight, Kim Koalshin, that used to be in my office. And their their overall budget this year is going up. It looks about 6% or so, but that, you know, obviously, they're they're not large dollar amounts. So even a couple of dollars can really make that skyrocket. So payroll is a little bit more this year. Just, you know, we had to transfer in personnel, so that can account for some payroll costs there. But Kim's done a good job of trying to identify other areas where you can potentially take some decreases. So she decreased communications line, the agricultural and custodial line. We did increase training. That happens when you have a new director, you need to get them trained up. Obviously, we had a longstanding director in Fran, and so Kim is training up. And payroll increased, as I mentioned, communications decreased, training agriculture. That's basically what I just said. Okay, so we're moving right along to the library now. And counselors earlier today, I provided you an email that had some information about the library and as specific to the pandemic, so that you have that is sort of resource reference materials if you need. But in general, library services are increasing by 1.41%. That's 1.68% on the payroll side and 0% on the operating expenditure side. So you can attribute pretty much the entire increase in library to the payroll, which is, you know, the there's several people who make up the library personnel, director, reference librarian, children's librarian, technical assistant, and five circulation assistants. But Barbara held steady all of the other line items in this budget. So thank you for that, Barbara, for adhering to the guidance that we try not to increase line items if if we don't need to. So just the payroll is increasing. Recreation department, it obviously was a tough year for recreation when it comes to programs because of the pandemic. So they their overall their payroll is going up. Obviously, there's still their staff that works in recreation. And they, you know, the payroll expenditures went up and operating expenditures went up to utilities, that $8,000 in there. We talked about that last night. The $8,000 was one of the line items in that chart. This is the third, the last year of the phase in for the utilities, which we do every, this is the final year. We think we've done it for three years now, but this is the final year for that. So, you know, again, the percentage looks inflated, but that's a planned expense for utilities. And this, as I said, this is the last year that we're doing that. And then the professional services line held steady at 3,000. So overall, recreation budget increased due to an increase in the payroll account for raises for for the staff. A couple of years ago, the utilities budget was reduced in order to ease the burden on the general fund with the understanding that the funds would be replenished in future years. And the recreation program fund has been absorbing most of the costs for the utilities. But as I mentioned before, the rec fund obviously hasn't been taking in a lot of program money over the last year, and we're trying to get them back up to full speed at this point. You know, we're very encouraging that things will get closer back to normal in the next couple of months. The next category is law enforcement. So we contract with the Resident State Troopers Program with the state of Connecticut. So the the troopers, they provide their services to us for basically what's almost the one, like a one fee type of a thing for their for their for their personnel line item. And we also receive their, you know, their their cars, their ammunition, things like that. That's all provided using the contract. But there are other line items associated with the account. There is an administrative secretary who does a great job of supporting the troopers program. There's overtime costs.
Sorry, can you hear that? That was my
Oh, sorry, did I, I got it. Did I get interrupted?
No, you're there.
Okay, sorry. I'll just so payroll for the troopers, overtime, professional services, that's the professional services line. That's the contractual amount that we have with the troopers for their service. There is a communications account that is split also with two other departments. Service contracts that remain level. Training and development, all of these remained level. There was you know, they, there's an account for food and clothing, program materials, books and subscriptions. So these are all the other things that we do with the troopers besides just their, they're sort of the one line item for their for their service to the town. So payroll increased, as I mentioned. Professional services increased by $7,000 due to the step increases for the two troopers and and then the wage increased for all the troopers. The fringe rate is expected to increase to 79% from 76.03. And traffic solutions costs for speed sign software remains the same at $4,200. That's the cost of the software to monitor this, the two speed signs that they use and move around town. And then minor tools that decreased due to the retirement of three of the rays, the radar laser guns, which were too old to calibrate. So the next one, we have the fire department or, you know, public safety department. The, this is a bit of a long slideshow here. And I want to just kind of focus more on the budgetary aspects of this, but I just want to thank the chief and the fire department for putting together an excellent overview history of the fire department. What I'll do is I'm gonna just kind of go through these slides just to put them on the screen, but not really jump into them. But there's seven divisions. In case anybody didn't know, there are
Mike froze.
Emergency management, animal control, and state police law enforcement, which that's, we talked about the state police already. Director of Public Safety is responsible for all of the things you see on your screen here. It's a very varied set of skills that oversees all these departments. And, you know, we have a lot of history on these slides, talking, going all the way back to the 80s. We only recently hired a seventh firefighter. They they were making do with six for many years since the year 2008, and they now they have seven, the seventh beginning in January of this year. There's also the shift that they work is Monday to Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then after 6:00 PM and nights and weekends, then you have the volunteer fire department, the fire incorporation takes over. So let me just skip ahead a little bit here. So the goal of the fire department is to provide the residents, businesses, and travelers in the town with high quality, professional fire, medical, and rescue protection, while also trying being cognizant of budget reductions, increased operational expenses, and growing call volume, because things have changed over time. There's more medical calls. There might be more residents in town. So obviously, their call value volume fluctuates depending on how many people are in town, how many businesses are in town. There's even dive teams. There's a hazmat service. So it's very, very varied what they do. And here's a list of all the full-time staff on top and the volunteers on the bottom there. So 138 total volunteers, including the CERT team as well. And training is a big goal of the fire chief and and all of the staff underneath him. They're very well trained. I'm sure the chief can tell you more about all these, but just here's a small sampling of the type of trainings that they do. And more than 270 hours of training each year. And here's the the some of the fire stations in town. So Station 140 on the top left there, Crystal Lake Road, that's sort of the backup main station. Station 240 is the is, so to speak, the main firehouse in town. Then there's the training center where the administrative offices and the EOC are located. And Station 3 is Garing Road and Station 4 Plains Road. These two stations, if those who are following along with the fire department and capital improvement project, these were recommending to be demolished and replaced with prefabricated structures, Morton buildings, so to speak. And that's that's on the capital plan for this year and will require a referendum vote in May for that. There's 15 pieces of equipment that the fire department oversees, including ambulances, engine trucks, ladders, water tankers, et cetera. This is, these are this is apparatus that was purchased with non-tax dollars. So either they were donated or the Tallinn Fire Department Corp. funded them. On this list, you'll see the SUV for the chief is on there. I know we've talked about in the Capitol meeting that in the future, that will probably very likely be shifted on to the town. But for now, in all the vehicles up to this point were funded by the corp. So thank you for that. And you know, we talked about the seven sections that public safety oversees, which I was in the first slide. So we, we actually, I'm gonna for for these, I'm gonna go to the the budget pages, because they're a little, they're more similar and constant to what we had before. So let's go to I'm just gonna skip ahead. So the fire marshal, some pictures of some fires that and also controlled burns that the fire marshal has participated in there. Again, fire marshal is responsible for code compliance, prevent loss of life, et cetera. This is really more sort of what they do on a daily daily basis rather than the budget. So I'm gonna again skip ahead. Water, so the water supply budget that does appear in the budget is 112,487 covering fire hydrant utility fees, and it's based on linear feet in town. And the EMD division, again, overseen by the by John Littell. They've been in full activation for over a year now due to COVID-19. So we set up our EOC last February or March. I can't remember the exact day, but EOC has been activated for a whole year at this point. And it's funded by the state and also a portion from the town. We both have a share. Animal Control Division. They they have a facility in town. They 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 accept donations, and we thank you, the everyone out there listening, Tallinn, thank you for your donations that have helped the ACO purchase items that they wouldn't have been able to afford. Thank you for your generosity out there. And let's let's move on to sorry about, well, this this is all out there if you want to look a little bit more deeper on this. So the needs of the public safety, so we, John has pointed out that to increase animal control hours is is a goal of his in the future. Strengthening the relationship between the town and the career staff. I I think we're making good strides on that. Increasing funding for volunteers incentives and retention programs. That's something we've started to talk about if there's any room for that. We did increase from the sixth, we 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 got to the six to six. So I think the the chief has a long-term goal of bringing up the staffing levels for the firefighters to more than seven members, but of course cognizant of the budget, you know, the expenditure side as well. And implementing the station improvement plan is is obviously a major goal of the next couple of years, if if funded by referendum. And then there's EOC needs as well. Town and Town of Tallinn Public Safety Services. So in closing, please be thankful and appreciate the level of professionalism and dedication that our relatively small cadre of public safety officers and volunteer firefighters dedicate to this town and to the career that they are pursuing here. And every time they answer the call, they do so with professionalism and dedication. And we're moving through these tough economic times. We hope that everyone out there listening will continue to recognize and support public safety's efforts. So just these are the budget sheets that I referenced before. So let's go through them one by one. This number you saw a moment ago, but it's the hydrant account, which is going up 2.09% this year, a difference of $2,300. The fire, the ambulance service, fire and ambulance, ambulance service line overall is going up. It's actually, the payroll is going up about 11%. And operating expenditures are going up about 4%, but when you average that out, it goes to 8%. And the main delta is there, as you can see, communications account is going down, payroll is going up, training and development is going up. Overtime is going up. It's a function of payroll. Usually, you you account for the overtime. It's about 10% or so of the overall payroll. And fuel and oil, as we talked about last night, is also a major driver of any increases in any department that has utilities. But the chief was was very good when we sat down about the budget. He understood that you know, the overall, one account may increase, another account may decrease, and does it exactly wash? Maybe not, but he he definitely saw where there could be decreases, either based on a one-time basis or or COVID type of a basis. So in this case, the chief decreased the line item for other services and fees under animal control down 87%. And payroll went up a little bit, 1.53%, and other equipment also is going down this year. Here in the emergency preparedness line item, there's no changes. This is again funded half by the state, half by the town. Fire prevention category is also going down overall here. So overtime is going down. That has to do with the fire marshal's fees, which we'll talk more about, I think, in a little bit. Communications is going down. Office supplies and other equipment are decreasing. Payroll, of course, you know, that that is the standard 2% going up there. On the fire suppression side, we have several positions are paid out of this line. The director's salary as well as stipends for volunteer and this volunteer for being the chief and three public safety officer positions and an executive secretary. So there's a payroll increase related to that, as well as overtime, temporary help. And training and development are also increasing, communications is decreasing. And that all ties out to an overall increase of 1.83%. 3% on the payroll side and just a small $255 increase on the operating expenditure side. CERT team, CERT team, they are looking for a machinery and equipment increase this year of $3,500. Otherwise, there's, I don't believe there's any other changes in this line item. Public Safety Services. Here we have water supply increasing by 2%. Ambulance services is increasing as well. Animal control is decreasing. Emergency preparedness is flat. So fire prevention, fire suppression, the prevention is decreasing, prevention is increasing, and the CERT team is going up. This is a roll-up sheet of all the categories, the seven categories we just talked about. So I believe that's the end of my overview presentation for tonight. I imagine there may be department-specific questions that the council would like to reach out to the department heads and ask some questions. We did receive some ahead of time, and we did get the answers back to you on those questions. So at this point, I'll probably just turn the floor back over to the chair and ask your questions, please, to to all the counselors. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, starting with community services, does anybody have any questions that they want to ask? Brenda.
Sorry, my screen moved. I can hit the unmute. Brenda Felucy. I I just wanted to say, and I mean, this really applies to all of our departments and everybody that works with them. But I really wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you throughout this pandemic and throughout each of your careers here in Tallinn. You've been you've really been an asset to our communities. You've treated our community with compassion and grace. You've ensured that your clients not only had what they needed, but also ensured that they had their their dignity intact while doing so. I see each of you adding responsibilities to your table year after year. And our community has greatly appreciated for that. Thank you, your sacrifices of your evenings and weekends has not gone unnoticed, and it's truly appreciated. What I want to know is what can we do to help support you? You know, the budget is one story. And I, if there's anything that we can do to help ensure that you're getting the community support you need through communications, or if there's something you want to highlight in the budget that is, you know, has been exceptionally helpful, I'd love to hear that. And I also wanted to hear, in, you know, not detailed, but like a high overview, how does this budget help you respond to the pandemic? You know, we're come, we keep saying we're gonna come out of this in the next couple of months. But I know it's probably going to be longer than that, because that's when the adults will be vaccinated. There's not a vaccine for children yet. So, you know, whatever, whoever wants to jump in and and answer any of those, I totally appreciate it. And again, I'm not, I'm looking for high level. I don't need to be in the weeds and micromanage you guys. So thank you.
Does anybody want to answer that question from one of the, any of the departments?
I know that was a lot, sorry.
Well, Bev, I will thank you, and I want to thank, I guess, all the others, my coworkers and and the departments I worked with during this time and the support of the council and the town manager. Because I see us all as a team in the community. And we all kind of did a thanks to John for leading, his leadership in this as well. So we're trying to do the best we can in human services, and we we, like everyone else, just want to get back to normal as well and and open our programs up again. And as I I know as Bruce does, and we're just the balancing act of what are the protocols and what can we do safely? So as soon as we can get to that point, we we will be opening the doors wide open. So thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, just for human services, I was just gonna summarize some of the questions that I had submitted in advance. So the first one was, what do you think will be the area of greatest need or focus as we widen our accessibility of vaccines and for more in-person engagement and services? And the answer that was provided was helping the community understand that we still need the balance of public safety of our residents while trying to allow activities that have been a common practice in the community. Residents are eager to have programs and establishments or back to a time before COVID. We are still in the position of having to be mindful of ever-changing health protocols. Program development will probably change quickly as the health guidelines change. And I know that you referenced sending Nancy an email to the youth services community theater that unfortunately, the the summer musical is being postponed to 2022 just because of the uncertainty with COVID going into that summer period. So it's unfortunate, but understandable. The next question was in relation to a proposed grant writer. I'd asked him what was the immediate impact for human services, and the response we got was that the Human Services Department will still continue to manage the grants that are associated with direct service with the department, such as Dial-A-Ride, youth grants, and the future senior center grants. However, a grant writer or project manager would certainly change the scope and duties that the Human Services Director has been performing. Many of the grants that have been managed through his department, this department over the years, having construction, infrastructure projects that are large in scope, have a timeline of one or more years. The grantee's requirements are usually complex and not following the guidelines can be costly to the community. So considerable amount of time had been spent on grant writing and project management, whereas the new position will allow for a greater focus on human services and the needs of the community. The new position may also have time to focus on future funding opportunities. Then I asked about the commission of persons with disabilities and how human services handling working with them. It seems like everything's really well overall in terms of arranging for speakers and following up on questions. They're still finalizing their goals as they are waiting for results of their surveys. So participation is somewhat limited, and it may increase as the goals are defined. And then a final question for human services specifically was what are what plans are being considered for volunteers to aid in services to residents, as well as eventual offering of in-person youth programming? So kind of mentioned the summer musical, I think, being canceled, and there would be maybe a virtual coffee house, but you know, there's a broad base of volunteers that are invested. During normal times, both these youth programs have been historically and will continue to rely heavily on parent and community volunteers. So that just covers it for specifically human services. And just want to thank you for answering all those questions, Bev and Nancy.
So you don't have any outstanding questions, right? That was just the questions that you submitted and got info on.
Yeah, no, nothing immediately. And I wasn't sure if I should include any of the questions from the senior center as well under the Human Services Branch, or if if we're gonna
It is, it is part of this. So if you have anything outstanding that you wanted to ask any of the, any of the of the community services section there, you could, or if you want to continue on, anything that falls under community services at this point?
Let me just double check if I had anything else. I don't believe so at this point. I just saw this comment. I was happy to to read that Nancy Don attended the Oral History Project Zoom, Community Zoom program that the foundation is working with the library on, and that the senior center will be working with recreation and the library to kind of coordinate on a lot more programs for seniors going forward. And just happy that, you know, even though it's been very difficult, that the Zoom, use of Zoom programs has been beneficial for the senior center as well as all the other departments. So that covers it for me for now.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for sharing your questions. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Next, I've got Lou.
Thank you, man, chair. First off, I I just want to echo what Ms. Felucy said, where thank you all very much for everything that you've done. I mean, this has been an incredibly difficult crisis that we've been going through. The last year has been unlike, I think, anything that any of us have ever anticipated or ever experienced. So thank you all. I mean, this applies to everybody across the board I mean, this applies to everybody across the board. That, and that I know, I, I hope you all know that if we had an open checkbook, that we'd be out there, try and help and provide everything that, that we could possibly give you guys and ladies to, to, to carry out your duties. But I know that all of you, based upon the questions I put forward and the responses that I've gotten, which I appreciate. Everyone, for Mr. Rosen heading up the issue and getting all the information to the, all the questions that we have. I appreciate all of you getting, getting those, the answers back succinctly and quickly. Cause otherwise we'd be sitting on these hearings for, I think, four or five days to try and answer all the questions. That I think the main issue here though is, are there any, given, given the proposed budget, can you work within that budget? And I think that's the, the prime question that we have here, based upon the responses. See, that I think that it appears that, that although we would like to provide that there would be additional funds, if they were available, that it would be great, but it seems like the general response is that pretty much everyone is able to work within the proposed budget. And so this is my question as far as, is there anything to add? Anyone is like, look, this is something that is a significant need that we would like you to consider at this point before we go through the, the line items. And again, going through the line items, we're not trying to, to pick it apart or to, to criticize anybody on it. But it's things that we're looking for efficiencies and just have questions that we want to clarify that we may not have been able to ask previously. So I guess that's my main question. Is there anything out there that somebody feels that this is a crucial issue, which we would like you to focus on? To first and foremost, so that we can put that as a front goal and then see if there's any efficiencies that are on the back end at a later point in time while we're reviewing the budget. And that's a general question to, I mean, I know we're, we're in that human services right now. You know, if there's any, Kim, if there's anything that you, that you have that on human services side, but this is the general question. So when, as you go through each one of them, that's a standing question that I have for everyone. So just make it easy. So we don't have to belabor the point. So, Kim, is there anything that, that you feel that, that on, on your side that is a crucial need? That, that you feel isn't given, being given enough attention that we, that we should focus on?
At the senior center?
Yeah, at this, at the senior center on, on any of the services that, that, that's being provided. I mean, and this goes for everyone involved in the human services side of it.
It's so hard to tell because we've been closed and I'm new. So, so I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants this year and learning as I go. So ask me next year. Or you next year.
I have a lot more confidence in you than flying on the seat of your pants, just.
Thanks. This is, this is Kim's first, first budget going, go around. So, you know, I don't blame you for saying, I just want to observe right now.
Thanks.
And then.
Very welcome.
And then for, for, for Bev or for anyone, I mean, again, that, you know, this is, this is open ended for, for, you know, for the human services. And then again, for everybody that's involved that we're discussing today. If anybody, you know, during their section wants to chime in on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
I think the budget we presented right now is good to go. I am hopeful that if the position gets funded for project manager, that I will be able to do a better job at assessing our future needs and other programs that we can implement and do in some kind of survey of the community. That I really haven't had time to do quite successfully. I, I have vision down the road to be more successful at the senior center. We may be looking at an assistant or, or even somebody to prepare meals and paid staff like other senior centers have. We really have a staff of one. So, and we've been doing phenomenal programs over the years, but I, I think that's the direction that I would focus on. It's like how to get the senior center really geared up and doing more programs. And, you know, we rely on volunteers, but it, it, it doesn't always work out to the best. So that would be my focus next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Right, and that, that's, that's my question, Madam Chair, for at least for on this aspect. Thank you.
No problem. John?
Thank you. A lot of this, of my question was, was addressed by Lou. But I'd just like to hear a brief overview of the Amplify program and then, and then sort of an overview of how the pandemic has affected the human services. I know you mentioned that you're going to work within the budget that you have. But I'd be curious, because I know that there's definitely a spike in mental health issues and definitely a spike in substance use disorders. So in a perfect world, are we doing everything we can for, for the folks either within the school system or within the community? As addressed by the human services department?
I'm going to ask Nancy to talk about Amplify because she works with them. Do you mind? Answer, you're on mute. Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
I think that in the past, we have worked very closely with the school as far as them letting us know if they have a family or a student that may be having problems. And when we are working with a family, we are in touch with the school and to find out what can we put in place, maybe in the school, what can we put in place in the community to help this family? And based on the fact that you, we have the mental health and substance use task force. Once that gets up and going, I think Amplify is definitely an agency that you are going to want to talk to. And that's one of the reasons that we are funding them this year, which we haven't done in the past. We're, they have 37 towns that they're working with. And in the past, we were only one of four towns that had not helped. And now that they have joined forces with the local prevention council, then they are offering a much more cohesive number of services to, to the town. They do assessments, they, they review what's going on in town. Where the gaps, where the service gaps are, how those service gaps can be filled for individual towns or regions. And it sounds like that's very similar to what the goals of the task force are going to be. They, they have a newsletter that goes out on a weekly basis and I can share that link with Mike that he can send out to the council. And then you can take a look at that and see all, you know, the various things that they do. I think one, one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, I look at a number of the area towns who are addressing this and their human services departments, actually their youth services departments have prevention coordinators. And they are, some of them started off being grant funded. Most of them are funded by the town. I think if you really want to spend the energy on helping the town address these issues, then down the road, that's something that you're going to have to have.
Down the road, what was that title again, Nancy?
It's a provincial coordinator. And they go.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that, like you said, with the, with the task force working with you guys and that this can be maybe something that they can vet out, kind of find on theirs and, and decide whether or not that's something we should bring forward.
Right, right.
Thank you for that response. It wasn't my question, but it was a question that I had and it, it's nice and red on my file here now.
Yeah. And I think there, there are a lot of youth services bureaus that do a lot of, a lot more groups and a lot of, you know, individual work with, within the schools and within the community with kids. But they also have a much larger staff. So I think that's something when you're looking at what you want in town to address these issues, there has to be a position that will, that will be able to do that.
Very good. And then from a, a human services, on the human services side of it. I know Bev, that you, you mentioned a program coordinator, I believe you said. What, what else do we need? What else are we missing? Because, just because of the effect of the pandemic. Is there anything else that, that we could provide or, you know, for our purposes here from a budget discussion? What do you think we're missing, if anything?
Well, I, I think the answer is always additional staffing, but and, and like Nancy said, if I support that position that she was talking about, I also would support having more assistance at the senior center. You know, because it's, many of those residents were affected by this and we were really limited in, in somewhat what we can do. Even though we were, we were contacting people, we were doing the food pantry. We were still getting people fuel assistance, meeting the, getting them on the eligibility, any programs that were out there. But we are limited sometimes by the lack of staffing in our office. So, but I, I hadn't put anything in my budget yet on, on that area. And I was hoping with, with Kim, as far as the senior center, we would be able to do a little more outreach as well. And, and we would do, we'd be able to assess the other senior center director programs and, and come back to you with, you know, a formal plan. What other towns are doing, how their staff, and the same in youth services too. I didn't think this was a year to ask for additional staff.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to, I don't think Bruce has talked, so I'm going to ask Bruce.
You get all my old good committees, you know that? Like, I miss.
Unfortunately, I missed your last meeting, Bruce. Sorry about that. So it's not, we don't, you don't have a ton on our budget, but I just want to ask a little couple of questions about how things are going. I'm, I'm looking at, you have the estimated performance or attendance going. Any preliminary signs on if you think tenancies and recreation or people using our resources and stuff like that are going to increase again? When the summer comes around? I, I know you guys are going in with your spring and summer programs. Is there any early signups, any indication of how that's going to look?
Um, for programming, I'm in hopes that we're going to get back to some normalcy. What that normalcy is, I'm not quite sure. But we plan for a full spring, summer and figuring it's going to be easier to cut back on maybe maximum enrollments and things of that nature. But we're looking to move forward, especially with the nice weather coming out. So we should see some programming open up. You know, I'm very aware of the, the guidelines that we need to follow. I've had many conversations with Rob Miller from the Department of Public Health. And I think we're moving in the right direction. Our outdoor recreational areas, just for passive recreation, such as our trails and tennis and things of that have been used out of this world. There's been a, a big uptick in the usage of our facilities throughout the whole town. You know, I know we're talking about a lot of mental health wellness, just in the seniors of late. But, you know, it goes far beyond just seniors, mental health, you know, children and all the way up. You know, are dealing with a lot with this pandemic, you know? So when, when we're talking about that, you know, programming, socialization, it, it's a huge impact. And us providing our programming, which we could, and whether it mostly has been outdoor recreation up until this past point. But we're slowly getting back into the indoor recreation and, and you know, you can see the appreciativeness of us being safe, getting these programs up and running. So right now, we're currently doing indoor yoga safely. We're doing it two days a week. We just finished up instructional basketball for kids three, four, five, six and seven. So we're making great strides into doing indoor safe programming. I think we can still continue to, to move in a positive direction to get more programming indoors. But with the outdoor, with the weather getting nice, outdoor program, I think it's going to be a little easier because there's much more room for social distancing. I, I am optimistic that we're going to see a positive flow of recreational programming in the next couple of months. Fingers crossed.
Excellent. Yeah, everything else in your budget is pretty simple. So that's all I got. Thank you, I think Bruce.
Thanks, yep.
Okay. All right, I don't see anybody else's questions, so I'm going to go through what I have that has not been, has not been talked about yet. Let's see. Page 132. Kim, look at, I'm starting right off with you. I should say, I'm going to throw it to Bev, you know. 132, community services. As you guys all know, I've been very anxious to see what we're doing for the senior populace. And it's been a year that we haven't had a senior center and our interactions have been pretty minimal. So it looks like also with our numbers that the majority of our senior populace, 65 and older. And when I say majority, like 75 and over, I think we're at just about 100% vaccinated. 65 is super high. So I'm, I'm wondering what the plan is to get us back into providing services for the seniors? Cause it's, it's been a year and I'm just concerned of the impact on the community there for that.
Well, I'll let Kim speak too, but we've already opened, we're doing the tax program at the senior center right now. We, you know, Kim and I are both looking at, and she has reached out to the other towns in the health department to find out, you know, when we can safely and what are the protocols? How do we have to say, do we have to continue with the, you know, the distancing? So I, I can't tell you exactly tonight, but our goal is within the next month or so to try to, if everything goes okay with the health department, we get the permissions. And Kim, what have you learned from the other towns? What are, I know you reached out to them as well.
So some of the towns, there are some towns that are open by appointment only. Most of the towns are closed, but are gearing up to, to open. They, limited though, it's going to be limited. And I, I talked with Bruce today and he came over to the senior center and, you know, just checked out a few things. And we, we talked about the guidelines. I, as we reached out to Rob Miller and he didn't get back to me, but, but because Bruce is already having classes, he, he talked with me a little bit about the guidelines and, and, you know, what would be safe and what wouldn't be safe. I, I would like to see us maybe start, you know, like with one or two programs, maybe, you know. It all depends, it all depends on, on what programs and, you know, like pool, for instance. Maybe that's something that we could, we could start. I know that people are, are so anxious to get back and play pool. And so Bruce came, he checked out the area and we looked to see if, if, if it would be something that would work. So I'm waiting for Rob Miller to get back to me. But, but I think the general consensus is that, that most of, most of the seniors, that senior centers that I talked with are starting to gear up to get back, you know, the next month or so. So at least, at least partial. And I don't think anybody's opening the doors full bore. But so, so my goal is to work on some programs that I think would work, you know, that, that we could open with and, and start slowly.
Perfect. Very happy to hear that. I'll be on the countdown, that's awesome. Bev, in relation to the Amplify stuff that, that John talked about, thank you very much for all that information. Nancy, that was excellent. I don't have any other questions to ask on that one. But one of the things that I noticed, Bev, was that there was a, a reduction in nursing visits. And I was wondering if we could kind of talk about the reasoning behind that? Cause of course, the first place that I go in my head on that is why would we, why would we be reducing this line item? With the senior populace, with everything that's been going on?
Basically, the, the senior, the visiting nurses for years and, and, and it's going back to in the eighties, when I've worked for another town. They did more clinics, they did more kind of testing, they did diabetic clinics. But now there's other avenues to do that. Basically, our nursing budget was providing blood pressure checks. They were doing, they were doing them at the senior housing areas. And some of the seniors have found other alternatives. And in fact, I think it was Oppo's Village that said they didn't want them to come any longer. So we're looking at other alternatives to bring in health services. I might even. So we're looking at other alternatives to bring in health services. I might even ask some other nursing agencies, we've been. Usually going with the H C N to see what they can do, looking for volunteers. But the the services we once paid for are being covered by Medicare or other resources. So in in some cases, I've had to call the visiting nurses to bill us for the blood pressure clinics, like. It's just in a different, it it's changed over the years, how community health nursing is done.
So it's not that we're not providing the service anymore, it's just that it's a, it's being funded through.
You you can now get your flu shots at Walgreens and and CVS, and there's other resources out there where it's one time. We would have a massive flu clinic and we might have two hundred people come. We're lucky now if twenty or thirty people come, cuz there's other places to utilize these services. They go to their doctor's office, they they get blood pressure checks everywhere. You know. The one time we paid for foot care under the visiting nurses, they don't do that any longer, so some of their services have been cut down. That's more for for profit.
Okay, all right, so my main concern was we weren't cutting that for something else and reducing service level, so that's.
About the way to manage it and.
Yeah.
You know, efficiencies, as you you guys have brought up.
Love that word, Bev, love it.
Well.
You are exceeding at it, it's awesome, you're killing it. All right, thank you for that. All right, so library, Barbara, I've got one for you. And actually, actually, this isn't really for Barbara, this is something I think for Mike. So Mike, something that you and I have talked about, Steve and I have talked about. Something I would like to see added to the budget here is I'd like to see. Some increase here in the budget, probably I would think between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars, if possible. To do some community conversations on racism and equity and some other opportunities for us to have. Some programming like we have in the past, you know, we are fortunate and we got the library foundation to fund some before. And I know we had talked about trying to do another one, and Barbara, thank you so much for all the work that you've done to kind of look at. What's out there and how much it would cost and what we could do. I I appreciate your work on that more than I can express to you. And I don't want to put undue pressure on your budget to provide these. These other programs, I think it's a, it's a good thing for us to do, it's a, it's a good thing to have this. As something that we can maybe do once or twice a year or something like that. So I'm hoping that we can find some wiggle someplace else to not have a a budgetary impact, but I would, I would really like to see us. Put some money in here for some specific programming, and I trust that whatever we put in for a budget, Barbara will. Be able to work with and find some excellent resources like she did last time. So I I don't know, Barbara, if you have anything to add on that, if you think that would be sufficient, but. I'm not, I'm not looking for like a full blown out thing, but just a a couple of opportunities to have a couple of. Programs possibly throughout the the year to kind of discuss it.
I think we could with twenty-five hundred. We did find one that was about fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen hundred. Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, if if that one that you you know, that you looked at that we were talking about, that was like the fifteen hundred. If we were able to then kind of mirror off and find one. You know, in that same kind of price range or a little bit, like the last one, I think was less, so, you know, it it, I thought it was a good opportunity to at least. Put something in there to be able to help facilitate, cuz the other programming that you do is all built in, and I know the library foundation supports a lot of it, and I don't wanna. I don't wanna put any pressure, pardon me?
And the friends too.
Right, and the friends, yeah. And I don't want to put any pressure on the program that they're already providing. So. If if you think that's doable, Mike, that's that's one of the things that I have.
Yeah, I was just looking at the library's line items and, you know, one thing, maybe increasing program materials would be the line item to do that. I'd like to see, you know, obviously where council goes overall and, you know, give me the opportunity to see where to make it work. Unless you're unless you're willing to, you know, if you want to inflate that line item to fifteen or twenty-five hundred more than it currently is without. Cutting, we could talk about that, but I don't know, you know, where the offset would be quite yet. I need the opportunity to look through and see where that would be.
I think we do too, I think we do too. This is just something that I definitely wanted to put on the table. To say that, you know, this is one of the things that I'd like to to see if we can find the room in there somewhere to put something. So, you know, I think we'll have the deliberations of of where council is gonna come in after all of these meetings, but. I just wanted it kind of noted as one of the the things that I think we could try to find some funding in there to do. So, let's see. Just, sorry, I want to write that down. And then I have recreation. Bruce, how you doing, Bruce? It's been a while. I miss seeing you, like, this is like, I feel like, you know.
Well, thank you.
I hate leaving a committee, cuz then I'm like, I never see him anymore. So a couple of things in here, I was wondering if you could. And I don't know if this is a a Mike thing or a you thing, so I know that the eight thousand dollars, that's the increase to utilities is because of the prior swing in the past. I'm I'm wondering if you're seeing any kind of efficiencies. One of the things that kind of came up on there. Obviously, your utilities were going up because, you know, we're we're doing that and putting the money back in there for you guys, so. Is the use, is the utilities number that's in the budget right now, is that an actual use or is that estimated off of the old twenty-seven thousand? Number that we're done with in this this budget cycle?
For the rec building. That, I would think, I I honestly don't have the answer to that, I think Lisa might.
I was just.
Yeah.
He's a Lisa, how you doing?
Hello, how are you all tonight? That, that's just a portion, there's still probably a little bit that he's absorbing. So, but the amount that we had agreed upon was that forty-four thousand to bring it back into budget. We'll know closer to the end of the year. Where he ends up at, but in the past. The he his budget was absorbing. The differential between what we had in the general fund versus what he also had in his budget.
Right.
So the forty-four thousand. May come a little closer. But I I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how much he took out of his own recreation programs. Last year. But we.
But we'll have a better idea towards the end of the year, and now we're caught up on this, so all of the money has been. Put back where it should be from that, from the perspective. So, all right, so I just kind of like to keep a look onto that, cuz I know we've done a lot of work over there on the rec center and we've got that new grant coming up, so if there's anything we can do from an efficiency perspective. With the utilities and the costs like that, then I think this is a good time to look at it because we've just finally caught up and made that move. So that's just something that I want to try to keep in the back of our mind, Lisa. And then Kurt kind of touched a little bit, stealing my thunder there, touched a little bit on one of my questions, and that was. Can you kind of give us a little walkthrough of right now what your plan is for the summer program, cuz I know that was a big loss to the community last year. But the governor has loosened up his restrictions significantly, and actually, in one of his press releases. You know, they came out to us and said, you know, start planning your summer camps. They're already encouraged people to start planning and start looking at what they can provide in the summer. So what I, what I'm trying to see if maybe you can give us. A little bit of information on on what's our plan right now for the not summer programming. But besides summer programming, also the the summer camp season.
Summer camp season. Well, obviously, we're moving forward on. Basically, like a normal season we're planning for, so I do have programming scheduled for the spring. That I know will definitely be able to run. We've run them safely, like soccer shots and things like that in the spring. But like in regards to summer camp, it's funny cuz they they say, you know, start your planning. As of, I think it was April second.
Yep.
But there's no guidelines of what the restrictions are going to be, what's the maximum enrollments, what's the. What's the grouping, you know, is so. Am I planning for summer, summer camp? Absolutely, we have the weeks set. I've had, I've already talked to past staff, so we have returning staff coming. We have, we're accepting applications right now. I think just the general summer camp. Aspect of how's it gonna run is on hold, because I just don't have the answers of of where I can go. But we are planning eight weeks of summer camp. We've posted that in the upcoming brochure that should be coming out end of March, early April. We've just held back on what our minimum and maximum enrollments are going to be, and then. On the flip side, we've also held off on posting any kind of. Fee that's gonna be involved with it, because I won't be able to. Yeah, I won't know what we can charge if I don't know what my enrollment can be, and it may be all. It may come down to what our indoor facility can hold, not necessarily what we can, what our capacity could be at Crandall Park, but what we can actually have here at the Recreation Department.
Right.
In regards to the guidelines, yeah.
So you know what, if it will help at all, Mike, this is like this like an email you're gonna have to send me, but if you can, if you can send me an email. Expressing that, I can kind of try to find out what I can at the state level on regard to the protocol and trying to get that pushed a little quicker, so we can start to plan for that. That was one of the things that I reached out with is, you know, we need time to be able to get. Safety measures in place, so. I know we're being encouraged to plan for that, so so we can push back, is what I'm saying. If you guys want to send me an email, I'll start pushing back to try to get some lockdown on protocol.
Yeah, that'd be very.
We could do that, yep.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mike. Then the last thing that I had is if you could just refresh our memory on the three thousand dollars that's in here for professional services. Where are we with the spend for this for this year on that, because that one was one that. Obviously, you know, it's hard, in your area specifically, it's a little hard to talk actuals because of twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's it's.
The three, the three thousand is strictly for Celebrate Talent.
Oh, okay.
That's all that is, and and I fundraised for. For the event as well to to provide more, you know, activities or whatever else we're gonna bring in for the for the event.
Are we thinking we're gonna be able to do Celebrate Talent?
I'm planning a full Celebrate Talent, so.
Planning, we are going with.
We are, I'm. We're talking, we're talking September, I'm hoping. You know. With the vaccines rolling out, that we'll we'll be in good shape to have. Celebrate Talent.
There's no reason not to think that, especially because President Biden just said today that he wants all states to have vaccine availability open on May first for all age groups, so. You know, I am with you on the positive, positive motion, and we are planning for a full Celebrate Talent.
And I, I got my 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 small little crew that helps plan that every year on board, so they're excited as well, so. We we're ready to go with it.
I think we're all excited. Thank you, Bruce, that's the last question that I had, but I see I have a few raised hands here, so. Brenda?
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind you that we do have four hours free every year of equity. Coaching, training. Whatever, from Sustainable C T. And if we're getting four hours of them from them free and they stretch it if needed. They have people who can facilitate meetings like this. So if, you know, you would like to get in touch with the Equity Coaches with Sustainable C T. Who have training, and it's not with their Equity Coaches, it's not just race. It has to do with ability, it has to do with age, it has to do with economic status. It's equity across the board. I'm more than happy again to make connections so that we can use their programming again for free since we're a member of this group.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, a couple more questions for for Barbara for the library services. If if you're able to elaborate, I was curious. If there's any major changes on the library strategic plan that's listed in the the goals for twenty twenty-two, or is that just sort of a a rolling? Program objective for the library?
Yeah, it is. No, there aren't any major changes right now.
Okay, and then the second question, I think was the data frame page that was on, I think it was the four thousand. Items received, ordered and processed, is that from purchases from the budget, or does that also encompass any? Donations or used materials?
Yeah, it could be donations, it could be, but it's mostly purchases.
Okay, I think that covers it for me, thank you. And thank you for the summary too that you provided, as well as the answers to all the questions, it's definitely. A little bit eye opening, so, and it's definitely been a struggle, I was just realizing, I think the thirteenth was. Being at the library that day, I think I was calling Tammy and Mike back and forth, I think Mike was in.
I remember that.
Yeah.
In New York State, you're trying to figure, okay, how can we stay open for as as long as possible before things get really bad and, you know. Augmenting, you're, I think, you know, you might have been one of the first people to do the curbside and, you know, call call up pickup process, so. Hopefully, you know, everyone's staying in good spirits, as you mentioned, those some of the lost services and opportunities for patrons. Which actually, sorry, that does lead to one more question. I saw that one of the notes was that unfortunately, the first graders can't come in and get their first library card and do the tours. Cuz they're planning on doing the actual field trips. I wonder if there's any way to to reach out to Dr. Willett or the Board of Ed to see if.
Not doing group, necessarily large groups, but if there's any way to reach out to those teachers and. See if they, you know, they can encourage each individual student to go and it's safe for them or reasonable for them to. Go in and do like a quick tour and get their new library cards.
I think Andy would be all about that. We we have had. Parents and children come in and and of course, we would give them their card, no matter what. We've always kind of pushed them for that first grade experience, which has been a lot of fun for all of us. Didn't happen last year and. This year, I, you know, I'm not too hopeful, but yes, that's a good idea. I can, I can reach out to to Walt.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Barbara, I just realized a really stupid thing. I got an email, I think my card may have expired or it may be expiring. Do I have to, I have a late fee, right? If you don't, we don't renew it in time?
No, 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 there won't be any late fee.
I know I got an email and I kept saying I gotta go down to the library.
We need the revenue.
You need their revenue, Mike's gonna charge me a late fee. That's all that I have on community, on community services. Does anybody else have anything else on community services before we move on to public safety? No? All right, well, thank you guys so very much. If you if you want to jump off, but don't have to jump off, it's up to you guys and Mike, but. On to public safety. Anybody have any questions before I go on public safety?
Do you want to start with law enforcement for first, since that's where it's at, okay?
Yeah, we we can start with law enforcement, that's the the last, so everybody knows that's the last line item in public safety, it is on page. What is it? It's on page two oh three, if you need to look at it. Lou?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This will be, you know, questions. Not so much for this year, but things that we're trying to, looking ahead next year. I know that, you know, we're discussing the budget for and what we have before us right now, but I think it's always good to plan. Looking ahead where with the the new Police Accountability Act, this is directed to Kevin. That. Is there going, is there going to be, do you foresee any increased training expenses? Given the additional training requirements on use of force on the. And some of the other things that were set forth in the Police Accountability Bill that was passed last year, Public Act twenty dash one. Is there anything that that the town would be how, that would the town would be responsible for on the training aspect? That wouldn't be included as part of your normal training through uh, through the state police?
I I don't believe so, being the fact that we are the state police, I think that will all be handled. You know, within the agency. I mean, I can tell you that our training obviously has been modified. So we do have more training and it's gonna be probably continuously of more training coming in. But I don't think that's gonna be, I don't think that'll impact the town directly. You know, maybe indirectly, but certainly not directly. That's gonna be something that the state police obviously would, you know, would be responsible for.
Okay.
I think if you were, if you had a local police department, that may be an impact on a town, but where we're with the state police, the state police will handle all of that. Which would probably be most likely incorporated in that fringe, which is included also.
Okay, I appreciate that, and then this is a directed to you, but also mainly to. To Mike Wilkinson and and Mike Rosen, again, along the same veins that with the with the. Issues regarding the. issues regarding the elimination of, of the qualified immunity or a severe reduction, I should state, of the qualified immunity aspects for, for law enforcement officers. Is this something that, that looking ahead again, primarily for next year, that, that liability insurance aspect of it, since there's going to be, that that's something where at all the studies I've read and everything that I've reviewed, that, that there's a potential for a substantial increase in liability insurance for municipalities? And even though the resident state troopers office, that they're part of the state police, but we're the ones that are responsible, at least to some degree for, for them as our, as our police department.
So, so, yeah, so our, our insurance doesn't cover the state police in that, you know, they, they're a separate entity, whether it's workers' comp or liability. That was not a big discussion in our renewal this year as far as how that would affect our insurance. And I don't think it affected any increase in the rates. At least that's what USI, who was our insurance consultant, had, has, has said. But having said that, you know, we continue to look at it and make sure there isn't any issues. You know, we, we only have, you know, if we had more of a presence at the local level as far as our own police force, obviously. You know, we have the one SRO that's with the Board of Ed. But that's a, you know, Kevin kind of oversees that person. And that's more a tightly controlled issue or work setting at the schools. So it's not, I don't think that's an issue. But if we had a, a lot of constables or a half a dozen, or that might be an issue. But that's not the scenario here in Talon. So it's something we're watching, but it's not something that, that was brought up or a major issue when we looked at the renewal.
And I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, as I say, the only other like perhaps unforeseen expense too, is I know we had a conversation about body cameras, which the state troopers do wear body cameras, but there was the question about, based on the new bill, if that'll extend to the constable. We, Kevin, Mike and I had a conversation about this. So we're looking into that further to see if the constable in the school system, the SRO, will have to wear a body camera and who's gonna pay for that? And I believe too, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that pertain to the ACO animal control as well?
Part of that bill, there is a subsection that the ACO vehicle and them will need to adhere to that new body camera. So something that I, I didn't anticipate that we were gonna be dragged into it. But most animal control officers are usually under police departments or whatever. But yeah, I, I gotta look at that. I gotta research that. Kevin and I kind of chatted about it and Kevin and I were gonna catch up over it. Kevin was gonna see if, because, you know, he's, they work for the state police. Kevin said he'd try to take care of us and, you know, help us out on his budget end.
Look at Kevin's face.
And then, and thank you, thank you for that answer. I mean, again, that's again, looking prospective because I, why I didn't want us to be caught off guard next year when the requirements are potentially kicking in. Now focusing on the future, I mean, focusing on the present here. Kevin, it's with the influx in calls that we've, that I know that your office has had as well as when your, when your personnel or off-duty Troop C has had regarding some of the increase in car burglaries in the area and other, other burglaries and thefts. Are there any, how are you prepared for that? Is there, are there additional resources that you would need from the town that would, that would help assist in, in, in that type of a law enforcement aspect?
No, I don't think there's anything additional, you know, we would need from the town. Obviously, we rely heavily on Troop C. And we have, you know, at the, you know, at a whim, we can make contact with Troop C and get any kind of assets we would need to help us out, whether it be extra personnel at times, you know, perhaps to help us with some, some enforcement. You know, if we, you know, have some targeted areas where these car breaks and thefts are happening. But I would say I don't think there's an impact, you know, to the town or anything that we would need in addition to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And you know, Kevin, I'm sorry, while we're, while we're talking about this, you know, I just want to personally extend a thank you to you guys. And if you could pass that on also to the, the troops and the, everybody who was involved. John, your staff also in the incident that happened a couple of weeks ago and especially Drago. Somebody please give Drago a hug for me. But just to extend the thanks, you know, I, I don't think people ever really stop to consider the amount of danger that you guys are in every single day, the minute you put that uniform on, until the minute you get home. And Trooper Hoyt, I hope he's doing, I hope he's, he's taking some time and he's healing well. And I just want to, you know, thank you for always being there for our community and for, and for trying to, trying to, you know, stay on top of all of that amidst everything else that's always going on. So I just want you guys to all know that I absolutely 100% value you guys and appreciate everything that all of the public safety does for our town here. You help keep us safe. And there's nothing that I can say that would ever be good enough to, to say thank you to all of you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Brenda?
Yes. Hi, thank you, Brenda Felusi. I, reiterating my remarks at the beginning, you know, that I said, we appreciate you and your staff. We know, you know, what a great asset you are to our community. Is there anything that we can do to help make your job a little easier? Is there any sort of community program that we could be doing that would help? I, I mean, we tell people all the time, lock your cars, take your valuables out. Is there anything else we could be doing to, to help with any incidents that are happening in town? Maybe happening elsewhere and stop them before we get here? You know, I want, I think we all want to be in partnership with you to help protect our community. And I know a lot of residents would like to be able to help too. So any words of wisdom? Or any programs you think we should be using, utilizing better?
Well, thank you for that question. I think actually the, the, the community has done a fantastic job in, in just reporting to us when they see things that don't look right, suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons. I mean, obviously this particular incident that we've been talking about, you know, the, the citizens involved in that incident obviously did an outstanding job for the fact of obviously initially calling 911 to get the response to the, the gentleman who put the lock on the shed to lock those three individuals in the shed. I mean, that's, we couldn't ask for more. And I've always said that there's more to policing than just cops in a uniform. It's a community. And we can't do our jobs unless we get help from the community. So I think overall that the people in Talon do a great job. They've helped us solve many crimes. We have used our Facebook page and we've had tips and call-ins that have solved countless crimes recently. So I would say, you know, it's just to keep doing what you're doing, letting us know if you see something that doesn't look right, is suspicious and report it immediately. And, you know, we'll, we'll certainly do the best, you know, we can to, to follow up on that. I will say this as well, Vice Chair Jones had sent me a, a list of things to answer back to, and I want to reiterate one of those, and that was the Citizens Academy, which I had planned on doing prior to the pandemic. And once the pandemic hit, obviously we had to kind of shut things down. But I'd like to, to reinstitute that Citizens Academy as soon as we have the capability to do that. And I think what that does is draw in a partnership with the community because now they'll be able to see what we do for a job. And I think it'll be good for the community. So that's, that's a hope that, you know, I, we can get that done in the near future.
If I could also just add, I know Trooper Eklund, I, I think you may already know this, but we are going to be inviting you to an upcoming town council meeting as well to, perhaps like we did last year to share. We can use the time to either talk about some tactics or about crime prevention or go over statistics or any other way that we can best utilize that time. But, you know, they had requested that you join us at a future meeting in April.
Yes, yes.
Uh, anything else? Did I get Steve yet? I didn't get you Steve yet, right?
Not yet, but I was just waiting to see if, if I had anything else before I went forward.
No, just to thank you again for your thoroughness and for your answers. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, take it away.
No, I was just gonna echo and appreciate all the answers to those questions that were provided in advance. And as things do open up, if, if, you know, that opportunity, if you want to be later in, in April or May, whenever the invitation is appropriate, if it's closer to where you can advertise at Citizens Academy at that meeting as well, that would be great. In addition to, you know, we'll, we'll go over the scope of what we are, kind of the expectations and hopes for that presentation. But if, if the Citizens Academy is kind of sitting on the back burner, that might be a good opportunity to bring it to the community for awareness. One question I had is the minor tools reduction. What technology is currently used if we're kind of retiring those three radar laser guns? Is it something that's just automatically within the vehicle or is it new replaced equipment for the, the radar guns?
Yes, what it is, is the radar equipment, for the most part, is being pretty much transitioned or phased out. And we're going to, and we have for many years gone to a, to a laser type of unit in order to, you know, detect speed. So every, every year, those radars and lasers have to be calibrated professionally. So there's an expense to that. So what we did is we had several older radar units and we just basically pulled them offline. There was no need to keep them online and keep recertifying and paying for that. So they've basically been removed and some of the lasers had already been purchased several years back, you know, in other budgets. So we're gonna maintain those lasers and keep those and just eliminate the, the old radars.
Okay, great. And then the other question, you kind of answered at least in terms of the staffing that right now you have a level, a reasonable level of staffing, the volume of residents. Is, is the current infrastructure where you're located, you know, right in town hall, is that also still adequate at this time in terms of your location in the green area as well as kind of the proximity to Troop C and the highway? Even though you don't necessarily cover the highway, you're within that area?
Yeah, I mean, I feel the staffing levels at this time are reasonable to handle the, to load and the calls to service that we have. Obviously, we're supplemented by Troop C as well. So don't forget that. We have that extra patrol trooper on all three shifts, no matter how many resident troopers are working. We always have one, one trooper assigned to the town of Talon. So, so even if, you know, I'm the only person working, there is always another trooper out of Troop C supplementing me. So I think the staffing level at this time is adequate. I mean, obviously, if the population increases, there's, you know, apartment buildings being put in, you know, that may be something we look at down the road in the future, but I think it's certainly adequate. The location of the office, I mean, I believe is actually a perfect location. We're very central to the whole town. You know, it's a quick access to all the major routes, I-95, 74, 84. And obviously, we're within a good location to Troop C as we use that obviously as our evidence lockup and, you know, the, the lockup for arrestees. So I think we're in a good location.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, and I appreciate you mentioning to the, the notion of increased population, considering that there's a few projects that are being considered or ongoing. You know, there's a chance that we may see a, an increase in the population in the coming years. So just, I think as everyone's kind of asked, wanting to look forward into future years, if there are any concerns that if the population increases by a few hundred or a thousand, you know, how that would impact public safety. And that also covers, you know, law enforcement as well as fire and EMS. So thank you.
Lou?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, Trooper Eklund, that, that I know that you mentioned the, about the Citizens Police Academy. I know that'd be a minimal, minimal cost. And I know that just sort of echoing what Mr. Jones and Ms. Felusi said, that, I mean, I guess this is sort of directed to, to you, but also to inquire with Brenda. I mean, we've been talking about Sustainable CT and the training they've had regarding equity and other things. Do they have anything along the lines of law enforcement or like policing or anything like that? I mean, I'm just wondering, since we, since we're part of that, if they have something like that, maybe we could call, call in people from them to sort of help us with that.
I, I will look at that and see what the umbrella is for the, for the equity and also see if they do offer any training. Now, the other thing that we can do with Sustainable CT is let other towns know what we're looking for in training or to partner with them to do events. This way we can share the costs and it opens up an avenue of, of communication. And so other towns that are putting on events may invite us to join them at little or no cost. So I'll, I'll put some feelers out and ask some questions about that. If you, if it's allowable to, let Lou send me exactly, you know, what he might have in mind or the scope. I'd be more than happy to pass that on and, and see if anybody has an offering of that that we can benefit from.
That would work. I would say, actually, Mike, should I go for you?
I'm sorry?
No, I'm asking Mike. Mike, would you, would you rather that go through you?
I, either way, I mean, Brenda's close with them too. I actually just happened to go to their website while you guys were talking. And I did see that they ran a training in October of 2020. That would have been good. But they, they don't have another one scheduled similar about law enforcement. It had said that law enforcement was welcome to attend that training in October.
Yeah, yeah, because I think it's something apart from like equity training, which I think is something that, that's, you know, good. But and that's along the same lines of what Ms. Nutria was putting forward. I think between the two of them, that's something great. But I think one as far as also law enforcement along the same lines with what Trooper Eklund is proposing as far as the Police Citizens Police Academy. That's sort of what I'd be looking for. But I, I could touch base with, with both Brendan and Mike offline. So I just wanted to ask that. So thank you very much.
Good idea. Thank you.
Um, I have just a couple other questions. The neighborhood watch that you were doing before or the, the, the interest in a neighborhood watch, is that the Citizens Academy? Is that the same thing or are those, are those different?
No, those are two different things. Those are where, you know, a neighborhood, particular neighborhood has some interest in, you know, watching out for their own neighborhood and, and crime activity that may be happening there. And what we're doing is we're assisting those neighborhoods, you know, with some crime prevention tips, et cetera. And one of the troopers in the office is kind of the contact and he can kind of set that program up for them. We've had a little success there. I thought we would have had more interest than we really did. But what we'll do is certainly once we're back up and kind of moving again here, we'll probably re-advertise for that and try to promote that again and see, you know, what we get through that. None of the Citizens Academy would be something, you know, where we would put out, you know, obviously we can't, we'd have to limit the numbers of people we could have, you know, at the class to get started. And then people would come just like they would to an academy, if you will. And then we put on some, you know, teaching presentations. One night might be how, how we do DUI enforcement. Another night might be criminal investigation processing. And just gives the people in the town an opportunity to see what we do and kind of give them a little training lesson at the same time.
Okay, so I, I like the idea with trying to get out the neighborhood watch thing again because I think there's a lot of frustration with our citizens and I'd like to try to find a way to quell that and, you know, come up with a solution, how we can make people feel safer. And definitely to reinforce the see something, say something. If there's a suspicious vehicle, we should say something, period. These car thieves, you know, they're getting a lot bolder with daytime break-ins and thefts like that. So I really just don't feel like we can be too vigilant when we're, when we're seeing people that we don't know in the neighborhood or cars that we don't know in the neighborhood to just try to kind of. But my concern is that people don't feel safe and I'm afraid of the reactions that we're gonna start to see. So I'm not sure how we can get ahead of that or what we can do to just kind of answer that frustration. And I know that's a lot to kind of put on you guys because you can't be on every road and you can't prevent crime if somebody is going to commit crime. If somebody is going to commit crime, you can't, you can't prevent that. So I'm wondering if there's anything in your mind that you think that we can do here to try to get out to our residents to have some productive conversations so people aren't acting out of fear with everything?
Well, I found one thing that was effective. You know, last year I did, um, I did go out to a couple of neighborhoods in person and I did a little neighborhood block. You know, not party, obviously, but a little get together with some neighborhoods that had some concerns with the car breaks. And I set that up with some of the some of the neighbors. And we just, you know, I just went out and they sat and the folks sat in lounge lounge chairs and we had a real open discussion, um, you know, obviously, about what the, you know, the the trends of crime are in their particular neighborhood, how they can, how they can help prevent some of that. Because once again, I mean, you know, like you said, we can't be everywhere and we're certainly going to need everybody's help on this. So I think it was a good, a good way to um get out there and actually be with the public, talk to them right in their neighborhoods and, you know, answer all the questions that they have. And I think that was very productive. And again, we'll we'll be pushing that back out again as obviously things seem to get back to somewhat normal. And I think that's a good way to ease people's minds at least and give them some good tips and information direct directly one-on-one.
I think that's a good idea. I look forward to when we can start doing some, even if we did in the Crandalls or anything like that, any place where we could have some kind of open environment so people can um can ask questions and you guys can can give some really good relevant information.
I mean, the other thing we did too, you know, again, this is before the pandemic, we did have an open house at the resident trooper's office. We advertised that, we pushed that out. You know, we did get some response, but I think it's new to a lot to people. But, you know, we had an open house and we had all the guys there so we could introduce all the troopers to them. And again, same thing, answer questions and, you know, at least, you know, speak to people, so.
Well, that's the only, that's the last question that I had. So thank you very much for your your time tonight. There wasn't, I'm I'm sorry that there wasn't a whole lot budget related, but more, you know, the community related. So you got a little more, a little more rolling on on that side of it. Um, I think that moves us over to the the public safety section, starting on page one eighty-two of the budget. Um, and that would go all the way through what we just discussed here, which was two oh three. So I think it actually gets us to two oh one in the budget. So does anybody have any questions right now for the public safety area? Oh, hands are up. Love it. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, again, John, Chief Littell, I've told you and I and your guys and ladies over there that I truly appreciate it, everything that they do. I mean, being over at the Emergency Operations Center for that period of time with all of you. You guys do a thankless job over there and that everything that you've done during the pandemic to organize everything is truly appreciated. Focusing and on the budget aspect, one thing that I've been asking on all the different town departments is uh as far as what the state has been sort of promoting, which is backroom consolidation and sharing of services and things like that. That one of the things with animal animal services, I know that we've been previously talking about shared services and sort of sharing the the burden with other towns. And um is there, is there anything that, is there any further development on that? Looking about that consolidation or sort of sharing some of the services between like Wellington and Ashford and and others from the other surrounding municipalities?
Would you like me to answer, Ms. Rosen?
I'm sure, yeah, you could probably, if you have any update from the last time, that would be good, just.
So as of February fourth, here's the Wellington's minutes of their town meeting. They brought it up at their finance board of selectmen meeting down there, saying that we're still discussing. We held a Zoom meeting with myself, Mr. Rosen and the selectmen of the town of Ashford to discuss. This was the first year that we brought Ashford in. I thought it would be more beneficial, more cost-effective to bring the town of Ashford into it, to do a multi-town. So we've had discussions. This has been going on for probably about five or six years. And we're still trying to, I guess, all come to agreement as far as who's going to pay what, who's going to lead it, who's going to be in charge of it. You know, right now, Nihog is out promoting to take over towns for animal control. I would really caution this council or caution the management staff, not speaking against Nihog or anything else wise, but it's a commercial service. It looks good on as far as numbers. It looks good as far as services, but it's like anything else that's commercial down the road. They're really not there. I'm not saying that they don't do a great job, but it goes back to you get what you pay for. So, you know, it's something where we have to look at it uniformly. The only thing that would conflict bringing Ashford into it is Ashford is 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 in a different court system. So that would be the only difference, that if we had one ACO, we'd be dealing with two different court systems. So the only other thing is, is our ACOs sometimes work part-time. Tina also works for Wellington as well. So it's not like, um, it's not going to be an easy switch. It's not like we're trying to get rid of staff in other towns or anything else wise. But you have really two pro bono animal control officers that pretty much give you a twenty-four seven, seven days a week. I encourage you to look at the slideshow that I did to do a comparison to the towns surrounding us to look at what we have for staffing and hours. Those two girls really are true committed workers and members of the community. And they they give us a, they give us a real good bang for the buck. So I feel bad because they give me so much and they do so much for me in this town. I wish I could do more for them. So we're still in discussions with that, Lou.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm, it's not a matter of of trying to look about eliminating them or anything else, but sort of building on synergies that we have with some of the other towns. And I I I know that they do a great job for this town, but it's sort of looking at at it from that perspective of building on and sort of reducing some of the, um, some of the burdens that they have as well as it's something that I put it to every every department. And so that's one of the areas where I, that at least for public safety, that one of the other ones as far as with the radio and nine-one-one calls, which I know that uh that we already share with other towns. So that's sort of just along the same lines. So again, it was nothing meant against them, but it's just something like one of those areas that we could, that we could look at developing.
Yeah, and there's no sense of each of the three towns paying that, you know, large amount for the radios or a vehicle or even a pound. So if it's something that, once we join services, hopefully to open up Pandora's box, to open up a grant, you know, opportunities or a multi-town fundraiser. I think one other town was just on the news in the last two weeks that did a fundraiser and they raised a enough of funds to build a brand-new internal control facility. I give, I give my staff credit for the for the conditions that they work in. So something that we've got to discuss and I think just to get all the team leaders and all the, you know, town CEOs together to, you know, hopefully, when COVID stops, we could have a a person-to-person meeting and maybe I think we'll make more headway, if you know what I mean.
Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's all I have at this point.
You're very welcome. Uh, Kurt? No, I'm sorry. Steve's next. Sorry.
You can let Kurt go next. It's fine. We're all here. We're not going anywhere.
All right, Kurt, take it away.
For hours yet, for hours.
Hey, we're doing good tonight.
I want me to go?
Yep, go ahead, Kurt.
All right, um, so just a couple of quick questions. Under the fire and ambulance section of the uh public safety portion here. Uh, first thing I I noticed was the Department proposed budget for South or regular payroll is about eighteen thousand dollars higher than the manager's proposed budget. I mean, usually you don't cut salary, I mean, salaries don't really, are really flexible. So what was that related to? Mike or Chief, whoever wants to answer that?
Uh, Kurt, are you looking at page one eighty-five?
Eighty-five, yeah, that's correct.
I'd have to, I'd have to ask Lisa, those numbers flipped? Because I I would imagine we're going up on there because of the uh public safety officer. Uh, I see Lisa, I think, is.
Increase is absorbing the extra six months of the public safety officer that was authorized last year.
So there's a difference, I'm deciding like the differences between the department proposed budget and the manager proposed.
Oh, okay. Well, the difference with that is because John requested to have a part-time secretarial position or assistant, executive assistant. I'm I'm not sure of her title, um, to be brought to a full-time position because he is in need of the additional clerical assistance in his office. And it was in there for the longest time. And when we were looking to try to get the rate, the tax rate to something a little more reasonable, that was one of the things that the town manager reduced when he was trying to find places where it wouldn't impact services as much.
Yeah, I referenced that last night. You were, thank you, Lisa. I referenced, I referenced that last night, that there was two positions. This was one of the two and the other one was on the public work side. And this is also just to echo, because maybe some people weren't here yesterday that are here tonight. Um, I am hopeful that this could still happen using the federal funding that we're hoping to get soon. So we still be able to get this person to full-time status using federal grant money if possible. But that would be outside of this budget.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my follow-up for that would be going down to the overtime budget. The department proposed and the manager proposed are the same. Even though the department, I mean, since I know now, the department proposed has had a half, I don't know, half the position, I'm assuming. And, you know, there's also an increase since twenty twenty-one, even though now we're having an extra person on staff. Where, where, why, why is, are are these positions not getting overtime? Is that why the overtime numbers haven't changed? Even though we're adding staff, why is our overtime going up? I'm trying to get at, if anyone could. Or proposing to add staff, any? Any enlightenment for that?
Would that be Lisa or Chief? Who, who, I I think that position, Chief, you, that position is eligible for overtime, I believe. Is it, well, yeah, I'll let John answer it.
So what is your question? The overtime's going up?
Yeah, um, you know, it's going up or been going up for a while. It's the same, you know, your your proposed budget had the same number as the manager's proposed budget, even though there's half, you know, there's a left, half a position was eliminated with the manager's position. Is that not where this overtime goes? Is that more of the firefight? Am I?
So, so just keep in mind, um, the original budget from the previous year had two firefighters. We're going to fund one a half a year and then fund it a half a year after. We never even put the other firefighter that was proposed the year before in there. I was asking for additional hours to bring one of my assistant secretaries up. So I had a proper administration staff in the office. But the proposed overtime hours is bringing the other guy on that's coming on full-time now. So as as you look at the staffing, um, it's something where we've said back five, six, seven years, as we've increased the hours from six to six for the career staff, there's times and places when someone calls out sick, someone needs to come in, fill in a shift earlier or someone needs to stay after later. So now that we're covering a larger timeframe with still minimal staffing, it's gonna, you're gonna see an increase there. We do try to fill it with part-time paradigms, but the part-time paradigms come and go like laundry. So that's where the increase is there. It's something where even if you look at the temporary help, I think I increased it in that aspect as well because we try to fill um a position for a full-timer with a part-time paradigm, which we haven't even, I wanted to even increase the salary in the part-time paradigm, no, no difference than seasonal helper, other departments that have. But I haven't increased the the part-time paradigms, but you'll look that there's increased hours for part-time paradigms. Because as the aging of the staff go on and they get more vacation days or sick time, we've had people out and we try to cover those shifts with either a part-time paradigm or we try to bring in somebody earlier or stay later to try to fill the gaps. So does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, no, that does. It does. Um, I appreciate that. I was a little confused on that. That makes sense. Thank you.
And John, just to clarify too, so the overtime account isn't just for your executive assistant staff. It's for all the public safety officers as well that are built into that. So generally, I I don't know exactly how you budget for overtime, but I think there's sort of a general knowledge that you go about ten percent. You budget for about ten percent overtime. And so because the overall payroll is going up about twenty-five thousand, ten percent of that's twenty-five hundred, am I about right with that?
Yeah, and if you look at like where we are for budget numbers right now, I'm at sixty-five percent in the ambulance category as far as the overtime expense for the year. And if you look at the fire budget, we're at seventy percent. So you got to take into account the different storms. And some people ask, you know, what do you mean by stormwise? You know, we we forget that we had the the August storm during the COVID times. Luckily, we've been very fortunate not to have a lot of snow disasters or snow wise this year. But this year here was also different because during those snow events that we might have had, I've and I, I might have not kept the overtime, the career staff on overnight because of the COVID, because I don't have the, I don't have the space need. So, you know, it it fluctuates from a year to year, if that makes sense.
You good with that, Kurt?
I am also. Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Kurt, for asking that question, because I was in, I appreciate Tom and Roger Rosen for you mentioning that the federal funding might be able to provide assistance, because I was going to say I would like the council to consider pushback on on making Kelly full-time if at all possible or or really being aggressive towards at least filling that partial position. And then sort of as a follow-up to kind of that staffing question I asked to Chief Littell via email. In terms of the Fire Marshal Division, you know, in your ideal situation, if this was to be reconsidered, either in this budget or a future, a subsequent budget, were you leaning more towards a deputy fire marshal as an added position or a fire inspector? Just looking at the slideshow, I think it's slide forty that was presented, you know, like Ellington has two part-timers as well as a full-time deputy, you know, some have part-time multiple deputy fire marshals. I guess I'm curious what would be the ideal addition for that area?
Yeah, so um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hide behind a screen tonight, because obviously, there's a handful of participants that we have on tonight, which I truly appreciate. But I do have some of my union fire career staff that is in the backgrounds of the Zoom meetings. I see their names. It's something that we try to incorporate and Rob is here and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong or not. But we try to incorporate a fire marshal program where we sent a couple of different staff members to the Fire Marshal's Training Division. It's a two, it's a two-tiered program. They take the inspector program and then they take the investigative program. It's almost a, almost a full year, but they go to, you know, they get taught by the Connecticut State Police Fire Marshal Arson Division. And the reason for that, as you guys know, years ago, was for succession planning. So if Rob got sick or Rob left us, we would have someone that could fill in or slide into that position. And, you know, unfortunately, between me losing my assistant, which I gave up in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, I had a full-time assistant that was also the fire marshal. And that's when Rob came on as my assistant deputy fire marshal. But I gave up the assistance position to try to bring my career staff up to a fairly hourly salary compared to other departments. And I gave up that big ticket item to try to bring them up and take on more responsibilities. And one of the responsibilities, unfortunately, it's nothing against contracts or unions or anything else wise, but the language and everything else wise, if we were compared to other towns, you'd be paying your Um, if we were compared to other towns, you'd be paying your career staff members to be certified in diving. Certified in hazmat, certified in fire inspector. Our guys do a three sixty, they're divers, they're hazmat, they're inspectors. But, you know, lately I've backed off of forcing the inspector modular. So right now, that's why you'll see a reduction in the fire marshal's budget of that five thousand dollar overtime. Because I can't force that. It's not part of the contract, not part of the, uh, situation. As we move forth, you'll have maybe hopefully the contracts will open up or they'll come to an agreement. But, um, as we move forth, we gotta do something, because if, you know, Rob's not gonna be here forever. Um, don't know how long much I will be here either. Um, you know. We'll see where it goes as far as succession planning, but you wanna have someone be able to. Keep it going versus having someone new come in and learn and have a system. And that's what I've always tried to develop here. Um, I'm very fortunate to have a, a phenomenal career staff, and I'm not afraid to say that they're on the air tonight. Or, um, our volunteer staff and, um, volunteers that we have. I mean, we have a great training division and guys. And we're one department and, you know, one of those slides says, try to, you know, bring that, that, bring them together. This is one department that is one. We have one name, we have one department and they work unisonous. So as we move forth. You'll see the slides, uh, for the fire marshal. Yeah, there needs to be an assistant or at least an inspector or someone that can come out and inspect. Um, when we get to the fire marshal's division, if you wanna ask more thorough questions about it, are we com- are we compliant? Are we inspecting everything that we should be? No, I, I, I will go on record by saying, no, we're not there. Do we do the bare minimal to where we are? Yes, but when you're expecting to add on, um, over three hundred and twenty-seven approximate apartments. Between a Santini's and the one ninety-five units coming on, um, that's additional requirements that, uh, that come with the duties. And we have one guy that's doing it. So we're very fortunate that Rob's dedicated. We did do a multi-jurisdictional agreement two years ago, I think, with Ellington, uh, Summers and South Windsor. Um, and that's for, you know, obviously a, a fire or something else that they'll come in and assist for, you know, investigation purposes. Um, but that's kind of where we are and we're, I, I've always been trying to spearhead this community. To be ahead of the curve versus trying to catch back up, because when you try to catch back up, you're just. You know, you gotta figure someone's on probation for one year and we have a very extensive training program where we can hire a guy off the street tomorrow. It don't mean that he's driving, it doesn't mean that he's teching, it doesn't mean he's by himself. It takes a very lengthy time to get him cleared on. Fifteen different pieces of apparatus, check-offs on the medical stuff, um, and get qualified to our standards. Uh, to be let on his own. So, you know, we have one guy that's coming off of probation this year. We just had the. Other new firefighter that we added in January, he is doing phenomenal. Um, and I don't foresee a problem with him passing his probation, but we just got him checked off on. Uh, two other apparatuses this past week and he started January first. So. That kind of tells you how much of an extensive driving training program or training division that we have. Um, because it's, it's part of, if something were to happen, um, we cover our basis. Uh, because they'll pull all the training records, they'll pull all the, uh, documents and at least we've always been. Uh, we, we walk away from courts, uh, pretty well.
Well, that's great. Thank you. And, and kind of going a little bit forward in terms of the staffing, going forward with, um. The infrastructure, I know that obviously the, the three firehouses is kind of at the forefront. But I kind of wanted to delve a little bit deeper into that permanent E O C item. Um, that's, that was listed as a goal in terms of a separate location. And I'm just curious if, if that's been workshopped or if that's something that needs to be. Um, if there is documentation in their past or, or recent that. Would outline where that could possibly be and, and if that would fall under possibly, you know, the five-year capital budget plan, and would that have to be? Potentially another bonding, uh, question for the community.
So it's something that's not used at, uh, a lot here or there, but when it is used. It takes over six and a half hours to set up an E O C with all the wires, all the computers, bring out all the boards, put everything up. Takes over six and a half hours of setting that up. Um, you know, we're very fortunate to have a great, uh, news media and weather events in Connecticut. That we get preamble warnings, but sometimes we don't. And, you know, if we do, then we'll set it up. As far as the E O C itself, we've looked at seven different, uh, properties over the last twenty years. Um, I even tried to take the old Talon Bank, which is the package store right in front of, uh, the senior center. Because that has a beautiful basement that we could have set something up. Um, but that was too commercial for the town. And I would have loved to take Parker's school and make that the community's public safety complex. Um, and, you know, Kevin and I could have, you know, formed a, a better relationship and had lunch together. But you would have had a public safety complex in the center of Talon, where then we would have had an access road to, you know. Route seventy-four and back up Old Post Road, but yet it was better suited for, um, elderly housing, which we don't have enough either. Um, of, so, you know, we looked at, you know, we looked at different options in different places. The first original, um, E O C of the community in the town was in the bottom of the shower stalls of the town hall. And I don't know how many people know that, but that's why there's antennas on the top of town hall and the bottom of the basement of the town hall. Um, and that was way back in the day. So, you know, obviously emergency operations centers have come a full, uh, three sixty. It's something that you want, you know, a separate water, separate A C, separate generator, everything else. We've, we've paired well with the training center. Will it withstand a, a true hurricane or something else wise? Probably not. Um, you know, a lot of the stuff that we operate, we can operate either, you know, mobile or out of the stations. But when we do have those disasters and we, you know, we, we forget too fast. Um, September eleventh, we ran the E O C out of there, um, and we had that as a drop-off pickup. And then we had the big two thousand five floods and we ran it out of there, two thousand and eleven, we had the big disasters with. You know, I forgot how many days, but, um, you know, the prior council back then even came down and handed out wood and water and. You know, everything else. And it worked out very easy because it was a drive-through or whatever, but. Um, you know, obviously we have our school set up as pod units for, you know, point of delivery if it, you know, if it was that bad and the roads were closed, the National Guard. Off different items or whatever, so I had the school set up for that. Um, but an E O C. It would be nice to have something, but it'd be nicer to have something for, you know, a, a multi-use thing where. You know, the computers or TVs or other things could be used because it's not used all the time. What I, you know, South Windsor has a. Has a model E O C. If you ever get a chance to go to the town of South Windsor and look at the E O C, absolutely, it's gorgeous. But I really don't foresee us looking at that amount of money. But if you ever got a chance to get into South Windsor, Scott Roberts or is our I T guy from a, from, um, South Windsor that has it with Talon. He would be more than happy to walk you through, but it gives you a real three sixty and it gives you positions. Um, but they also have separate rooms of separate offices as well as, you know, spots where people can. Go off to a kitchen or go off to a separate office or even stay over. Um, so when you design an E O C, you gotta think about who's on shift, who's staying, who's not going. Especially if it is, it's a huge disaster and, and depending on the, the number of hours and the number of staffing that you need. Um, obviously, we all had a, a, uh, an emergency management state homeland security meeting today that I just got sworn in. And Mr. Rosen, uh, was there as well and got sworn in. So, you know, it's something where we look at their facilities and it's beautiful. But we've never been in those COVID times where, you know, we had limited ti- limited staffing and now. You know, if I had the room at the station one forty, we probably could have used two different, um, places for two different set, uh, setups. But it's something that we gotta look at and, um, you know, if a building came available, I'd be really game to look at it. Um, you know, as long as it's tied into a consistent water source, sewer source, um, and electricity. So something that, you know, I'm always keeping my eyes open, but not something that's on a huge horizon just because of budgetary and, uh, community needs right now.
Okay, thank you. And sort of the second infrastructure question, because it feels like it's more immediate of a concern is the animal control building. Seeing your answer to the question about whether it's in adequate or good condition and the response is it's barely passing state inspections year to year. Should that some be something that we should be considering in our long-term capital improvement plan, you know, the five-year plan? To have that. Infrastructure, you know, re- either renovated or replaced entirely.
I don't mean to bring a tennis ball back to the court, but I would, I would definitely encourage you to go back to the facilities management plan of two thousand and six. It's highlighted there. Um, we're very fortunate to have, uh. One of the other, other A C Os that took over as a state A C O, so he's very, uh, fortunate and works with us very well. We're fortunate to have a good portion of facilities and infrastructure where they take care of things on a, uh, an emergent needs when something happens up there. But, um, if, I don't think that's one of the facilities we've visited on the tours. Um, and if you ever got a chance to stop up and see either Tina or Sam, even on the weekends. If you walked in and, uh, seen where their office was and, uh, looked at the bathrooms or the different conditions. Um, you know, it's something that one of these years is gonna come back to, um, not passing. So, you know, that's why I wanted to merge towns together and, you know, obviously this is gonna be on TV and I'll say it as it is. Um, you know, Wellington definitely has a better pound than us, but it's something as we merge services, we have to look at, will our residents be? Um, acceptable to go to Wellington to get your dog when your doggy ran off your property. And, you know, then you gotta look at staffing of going down to meet that, um, person. So you get travel time, you got. You know, it's, it's a catch twenty-two. Um, you know, obviously Coventry ties into Vernon, so the dogs from Coventry go to Vernon sometimes. So sometimes already used of it, but we've been so fortunate of having all of our services in one community. It's something where, you know, we gotta come to grips one of these days. Um, and is that the sa- is that the right spot for it? No, we even looked at different properties. I even looked at the old landfill because it's gated. It's, you know, it's up in the back. I even looked at that building and said, well, what would be the cost to even put a Morton type of building up there as well? Um, but once you go to a new A C O building, the town of South Windsor took over the, uh. I probably shouldn't even tell you guys this, because Lou would be happy, but, um, they took over one of the old firehouses and they rehabbed it to be an A C O facility. But yet, the cost of construction of raising the pens up, heated off the floor. There's a whole code compliance where it comes into sewer, sanitary. There's so much that needs to be done. It's, it's the same as where we are now. You're almost better off to build a, you know, a newer facility. So, um, it's something where it's gotta be on the horizon. Can we do, you know, Mike, uh, our past A C O was even gonna do a, a fundraiser and try to do a barn building or. You know, some type of thing to raise funds, but we're, we're still looking at it, but, um. Obviously, every time we go to look at it, it's the wrong economic times to, to look at something to do. So hopefully that answers most of your questions.
No, it, no, it doesn't. And, and if you're willing to, if it is a digital copy, if you or Mike can send it over, I would, I would mind checking out that. Oh, six facility management plan and looking at that section as well as any others that, you know, we're not already addressing, so.
No, and, and it, it's nothing to bring up against, you know, the council back then or prior councils or anything else, but it's something where. You know, some of the discussions that came over the community the last year or so about a skating rink and about, you know, a dog park and different things. It's something to look back at, because that was adopted and planned. It's just something to refresh our memories, because we've had so many numerous projects and, you know, we've had so many emergencies between the schools and the rest of the stuff. It's something just to refresh yourself and look at, because it's something that you can put on your horizon where you are now, or the next council's coming in can look at it as well. So I can make a, a hard copy this week and, uh, we'll definitely get it to Mr. Rosen. Maybe you can share it with the rest of the staff or whatever. And, you know, you guys can look at it, because there's a lot of things in there. I mean, we've had numerous meetings about dog parks in town. Um, you know, it's, it's subjects that we have already visited, um, but it's the funding, it's the money, it's the property. It's, it's a lot more than just putting a checkmark, you know?
No, thank you. And, and there's one final question, just a more high level, but. Obviously, I think it was mentioned most, uh, multiple times that it's definitely been a very emotional and stressful year. And I, and I just wanna know if you're getting any adequate assistance from the state or if there's anything in the town or regionally. That can help provide some of the emotional and, and mental health. Assistance to the staff that really have been overworked and drained throughout this pandemic and on top of all those. You know, natural disaster crises that we've dealt with throughout the year, especially the hurricane.
I can tell you, we have a, we have a great staff of peer support, um, in my department, um, that do a phenomenal job. Um, they always reach out to, you know, different individuals, um, from the state level. Um, I don't have a problem speaking, because I'm sure that most of my colleagues in the other hundred and sixty-nine towns feel the same as I do. Um, they did put a lot of mental health laws and bills together, um, the same as they did with cancer for firefighters. And, uh, a lot of different, uh. Um, a lot of different individuals, uh, made sure that, uh, the bills were, um, clearly identified. Where some people are afraid or might not make that phone call. Um, because, you know, you can get assistance for two years and then you're classified and you're out of a job or you're classified as something. So it's a catch twenty-two. Um, you know, they have to, they have to work on it. I think there was some more. Uh, language or they were looking at different language this year in the, in the legislature again. But every time the legislation comes up for new bills and everything else wise. They just like to build a book and a book, no, no offense, no offense, T M A. But they build a book on the state legislation part and everything else wise, and there's so many things that, you know, reiterate instead of fixing what is already there. So, um, I can tell you.
To me, I'm new. I'm trying to change all that crap. I'm new.
Uh, well, good luck.
I know, yeah.
Um, we try to put in a couple of different, you know, legislative bills and different aspects, uh, you know, even try to reach out to Brian Herbert a couple of times. And, um, it, it, it is what it is, I'll say. So, um, you know, we, we try to do what we can. Um, but I think a lot of us, um, and I think I speak freely and I think, uh, you know, Deputy Chief Dogens on it, he's one of the, uh. Uh, pair of support, uh, members as well, but, uh, we take care of our own, we look out for our own. And, um, you know, it, it has been a very, very taxing year. Um, you know, it, it's, it's a sad situation. March is a very hard time for me. I don't have a problem telling anybody that. Because when, uh, Kevin Hoyt, which I don't know if Kevin still in the ear or not, but, uh. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that week I was putting a photo album together for Trooper Miller, because the end of March is Trooper Miller's anniversary. And Trooper Miller's name was Kevin Miller. And our trooper that got involved that, uh, did an outstanding job and, um, is a great trooper in our town is Kevin Hoyt. So when I heard Kevin's voice on the radio. I just happened to be in my car, moving my car when I heard his voice. So, um, hence the reason I'm probably there so quickly. But, uh, you know, it's been, it's been a very taxing year and that, that same weekend. Um, we know, we lost a very young person that worked at one of our, uh, veterinarian places in Talon. Um, very young, two young schoolchildren in town, very close to our Santa for the Christmas tour. Um, very close to a lot of my members. And then that same Saturday morning, right before Kevin's accident. Um, we were on a call for a very well-known individual in town, um, that his daughter, uh, found. So we've had some back-to-back weekends where, um. It's been, uh, pushing, pushing a lot of people out and, you know, is that hence why some of the response levels are down from different individuals or. Members of my department. Um, we're, we're one, we're a whole and it's, um, we try to, we try to work, we try to stick together. Um, but I will tell you, when, you know, certain, certain individuals or people from the town send me an email or send me a text. Uh, I will tell you and my staff will probably back me up that I do send that message out to my staff saying, hey, so-and-so is just reaching out to us asking. Um, it goes a long ways, um, uh, above and beyond and probably heals us, gets us better. But, uh, you know, like I said, we have, uh, Jeff Gallagher, that's our, that's our department chaplain. He's very fortunate that, uh, he became the chaplain of the connect state police as well. So, you know, we're fortunate to have him on board and, um, he's got a resource of contacts as well. Um, but, uh. We'll probably leave it at that, if that's okay with you, Steve.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. No, you've answered above and beyond and, and so do a lot of your volunteers and paid staff. So thank you for, for answering all those questions.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Brenda?
Moved again. Um, thank you, uh, Brenda Flucy. I, again, reiterating from what I said at the beginning applies to you guys too. I'm very, very thankful for you and your entire staff and volunteers, um, for your dedication to our town. We benefit greatly from every single one of you. Um, most of this question probably has been answered in, in different parts. But, um, is this budget enough to position us for the rest of this pandemic? To be able to respond, um, to the needs of our, of you guys' public safety. To ensure the safety of our residents and to help finish up, um, with, you know, any testing or vaccine. Clinics that may come our way. Um, I know, you know, you extensively covered the E O C. I'm greatly appreciated to hear about that. Um, spent a few nights there myself. Um, but i- is there anything else that you wanted to highlight that this, um, budget is appropriate or is missing? In order to finish the response to this pandemic. Thank you.
I would never wanna talk against my boss that's on the same screen with me.
I don't see any reason you would, you know, that, you know, I don't know what you're gonna say, so how do I know?
So, and honestly, uh, I think you guys got my private email last night, um. You know, obviously there's a lot of cases of Ebola coming up. Um, you know, we didn't bite the bullet uh. Four years ago or five years ago, when you know, most of the communities around here bought a lot of extensive uh money for Ebola. I know that we had the resident troopers down to a training event when Ebola hit. Um, we were very fortunate to. Have an agreement with Kevin and his staff that we sent them to get uh fit tested for N ninety fives. But I can tell you right now, my department physicals are on a hold because the uh physicians that do our yearly um physicals that. All my staff have to pass in order to maintain a volunteer or even my career staff that is probably. Uh, I wish I could see their faces on the Zoom meetings, but are probably chuckling in the background. They actually have to go to a uh. Visit, you know, a physical to keep their job every single year, but um the new doctor's office uh can't get any N ninety fives anymore. So I had to play the political role and open up the E O C and go on activation and put in for N ninety five masks. Because the N ninety five masks that we had an order since last March, or I should say. Uh, Betsy and Kelly might be on the air tonight, might correct me, but I want to say we put in a large order of N ninety five masks that. To wear an N ninety five, especially as a town employee or uh especially in my department. You have to be fit tested for it, whether it be a eighteen sixty or eighteen sixty S uh depending on a size. So those are locked up. Which, you know, you know, Kevin, if Kevin was on tonight, I'd say I need another trooper to guard the N ninety five door. Um, not saying they're walking, but. N ninety five masks are like gold. Um, so right now, what do I do with my, you know, physicals? Um, how do I? How do I send them? If I send a brand new person that comes in tomorrow, I have to send them to it to the doctors with two different masks. That means I lost two masks for a fit test and I don't want to go through my cachet. So. I can tell you that I don't, I I'm very nervous about that because I have no idea because the N A fives are locked up from the feds. And locked up at the state level. Um, I don't know what I'll get for mask wise. Um. But that's a scary situation. And if Ebola hits, um. You might want to put another two hundred eighty five thousand dollars in your budget because if Ebola goes through an ambulance, you might as well just take that to the junkyard. So that's one of the big things. If you don't have a protected wrapped or anything else wise, that's a whole nother scenario. Um, and it's something where that comes up, we even, you know, like I said, it's, it's one of the stations even similar to like the COVID stuff. Where we staff our staff or if two people got it contracted or whatever else, we don't want to send them home to their. Uh, to their families or loved ones. We would end up putting them up in a firehouse and you know, let them, you know, go into quarantine period for two weeks or something else wise. Um, so it's something that. We're watching as it goes. Um, hopefully the vaccines will take off, but uh very interesting what's happening with the vaccines and uh, you know, the different. Variables are out there and who knows if Moderna is going to come up uh at the end of April with a booster shot. And Pfizer hasn't talked about it. Johnson Johnson hasn't talked about it. So as far as the the stuff, um. I could tell you, I wish I brought my folder. I knew this question. I knew one of you was going to ask this question tonight, but on a daily basis, uh. Unfortunately, I dump it on Kelly because Betsy's already too uh buried, but Kelly started her job off um. On probation, the first month when the COVID hit. She hasn't been officially even trained or even explained the rest of her job yet. She spends at least forty five minutes an hour taking Rob Millers in the health department's uh listing of the talent residents, my confidential list of who's got it because. I need to have that confidential list because it is flagged at nine one one, but I also have an animal division and other services to run. So we want to make sure that we have it uh in case of, you know, sending staff or, you know, interacting wise. But she puts that list together um on a daily basis. Um, I haven't asked to keep her for extra hours during the daytime. Um, but she's um, she's great. Um, but. As far as the hours and the rest of the stuff during the daytime, um, it's very difficult. Um, and it's hard to keep up with the rest of the daily duties. Um, so as far as the rest of the COVID stuff, we have some staff that's still not responding. Whether it be uh a physician's note or a doctor's note. So you know, everybody's still nervous and uh waiting for the, you know, the vaccine to kick in, but um. We're getting hammered, hammered. So as far as the testing sites, I got all my staff doing it volunteer wise right now.
Thank you so much. And if something does come up, please, you know, reach out. We're here for you and we thank you for being there for us.
Won't lie to you though, am I still driving fire trucks or being on top of roofs? I was at a fire tonight.
That's all I had.
I'm sorry, I'm talking away and I'm on mute, Lou. My dog was barking. I had to turn it off quickly so you guys didn't hear him fighting over the little new dog bone.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and this is, uh, I mean, uh, questions more uh that uh don't need to be answered. Right now because they're going to involve a little bit of research uh from both uh Mike and Lisa. But um with regard to the uh, to the issue of uh part-time versus overtime. Uh, if uh Lisa and Mike, if uh if the two of you could sort of uh take a look at the uh, at the information regarding overtime. Regarding the administrative staff, staff, including uh Kelly and Betsy. That have gone, that's gone over the past year. And if you can sort of do, uh, present us an assessment as far as. The amount of time that was uh, uh, that was overtime that was expended between the two of them. Uh, and then what the uh, what the delta would be regarding uh that as far as the overtime that was paid. And bringing uh Kelly on to full time, uh, that that's something that I'd be interested in seeing. I know that you don't have that information offhand right now, so uh but we can, if you can get that to us. Um, the other one.
Lou, hey Lou, I'd caution on that because Kelly's already a part-time employee. So you can, I could only carry her for so many hours for a number of weeks. So sometimes I went to the max and then I had to wait two to three weeks and then to bring her back on a couple of extra hours. So. Um, you're not going to get a true number from a, from that aspect. Just keep that in mind.
I I understand and I know you and I have discussed that before chief. So that's something that I'm cognizant about. Just sort of get the. Uh, the money uh uh aspect of that. And then we could uh discuss that within the uh, within the board, uh within the council itself. So. Um, the other thing is for um looking at uh building on a. Uh, Mr. Jones's questions regarding the E O C and other things like that. Um, Mike, you think that this is something like, you know, if we were looking for additional funding. Uh, to sort of uh update the E O C because uh, uh, you know, I'm along the same lines with with the, with the chief on this, we're. Setting it up. That's, you know, if it takes six hours, eight hours to set it up. And uh then we're scrambling as I know on several occasions we were regarding some of the computers and other issues. Uh, is this something that would uh sort of parlay in that grant manager's position that you were looking at? Uh, so that it could, it's something that they could possibly see about additional funding on either state or federal side. A sort of assisting chief because I know that he's doing a yeoman's work regarding searching out funds. And searching out grants, but if there's other things that they may be able to find on the public, on the private side. Um, that uh may be able to assist Chief Laitel so that he can devote his time to uh. To running the operations as opposed to being tied to behind the desk, which I know he loves being. Um, and then uh the last one is uh sort of moving forward um uh in anticipation. Of the uh, uh, the development property going forward, uh, the Santini property possibly going forward uh in the future. Uh, if uh chief, if you could uh work with uh, uh, with Mike to uh down the road. Again, it doesn't need to be done right now, but. Looking forward for like next year or possibly the following year, a uh, a staffing assessment. All like a uh, a task assessment so that we could sort of plan ahead. Uh, like you, like you've said that we need to do to see what the right size staffing would be if we're there in additional two hundred fifty units. At that one and potential other uh, other units going on uh being built up around town. If we can make sure that we have the right size staff, where if it's something that we need to bring additional full-time staff on down the road. That we can anticipate that based upon the projections of uh, of these uh, of these additional housing units going up. Again, that's something down the road, uh, but it's something that I'd like to sort of see so that uh. Uh, going forward that uh even for like next year's uh town council, whoever that may be, that they can. Sort of start working that in and that we could possibly start planning future uh, future budgets off that. Um, and. I think that's it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou. Anybody else? Okay, um, Lisa and Mike on page one eighty five. Um, Lisa, I was wondering if you could tell me where we are from an actual perspective on the service contracts. Um, the spend's been about a thousand dollars in the past few years. But we're asking twenty six hundred. I, if I remember correctly, I think that may have had something to do with uh communications um. Devices or something like that. So I'm just wondering where we're at for actuals and if we think we're, if that's exactly what it was. I can't remember.
Are you on fire? You're in.
One eighty five.
One eighty five. Page one eighty five.
Let me pull up the account.
Tammy, you on fire or ambulance?
Ambulance, one eighty five.
So service contracts right now we're at two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Actuals right now. Okay. And that is that where we added, um, we, we, is that was the, was it the radios and all that stuff that we added last year that all the different change in that? Is that what that's contracts is?
No, uh, the radios become under communications.
Okay.
So service contracts, um, obviously the the increase, obviously, um. You have a, we added a washer uh a year before. So your service contracts, because the corporation owns the washer. The two washers and the dryer that's at the firehouse because we got that um. Through the corporation that bought it. Um, so there's an annual service contract with the annual washer and dryers that are at uh twelve hundred dollars. And then obviously we had to uh put in there for an additional contract for the striker stretchers. The only thing that's obviously a pro bono in the ambulance is there's a, and I'm not going to say it's a slush fund, but there's a two hundred dollar charge in there for. Uh, disposal of uh. That unclaimed person, um, if they don't have a family through a funeral. So that two hundred dollars usually doesn't end up getting spent. But that has to be, we have to budget for it. And I was the golden child that was chosen as a department in town to put that into the budget.
Okay, um, equipment rental, same question in the past. It was one point two about, about a lot twelve hundred dollars and we're at about. Two thousand now. So are we on par for that one for equipment rental?
So the problem with the equipment rental, obviously, uh, usually budget at what nineteen fifty or whatever it is on their ambulance. And you're at a thousand eighty right now. Um, obviously O two wise and you look at the call volumes with the COVID stuff and the beginning of the COVID stuff. Throughout the year was kind of down with transports and different things, but um. That's for the O two and uh regulator, the O two contracts that come into the O two bottles.
All right. I remember asking that one last year. I learned something new. Okay. Um, now I'm on eighty nine, uh, the animal services. So uh, the communication numbers, I know this one we did have last year. Um, how are we doing on that one? Those were the new radios because then again, we mentioned something. Um, I want to jump down a little bit and page two hundred on cert. This is going to really show you I am not a techni- technology person and I'm definitely not a ham radio person. But we talk about the ham radio system down the cert area and I'm wondering if the, you, you talk about getting rid of the radios that are in animal control. Um, to, for this new platform, is that something that could be used for cert in place of the ham radio system?
You're pretty good at your numbers. I give you a lot of credit. So the animal patrol radios that were purchases, whether it was a portable as well as the radio for the vehicle. That was a new contract that we started. So they would keep in contact with nine one one when it went out at nighttime and weekends.
Yep.
The cert team proposed to have the cert radios installed at the E O C. Because now we have a a dedicated ham uh operator group uh that can communicate during emergency operations. So I basically took some of that money out of ACL wise, and that's why that new charge is down in cert. So you're absolutely right.
Okay, all right. So it, it, okay.
Just a different, it's a different radio platform.
You say ham radio and and I'm going back to thinking about, you know, like Goonies and E T and.
Maybe at Subway tomorrow and I'll buy a ham sandwich and then.
I know, right? I I like that kind of ham, but I'm like ham radio.
Basically, it's a amateur, uh. I think Jim's on and one of the other guys are on tonight that can give the clear determination of it, but.
Mr. Toomey, I talked to him earlier.
Yeah, so Jim, he's got his cert team up and running and um Jim can kind of explain it. They asked for this uh. Ham radio operator uh base station radio. So Jim, you want to take that over?
Sure.
Oh, he is there.
What we've done, uh, part of this uh. Activation on the cert team, I found out that we had a number of members that are ham operators. Ham operators. Is a international organization. Uh, these people through their radios have the ability to communicate. Anywhere in the world. Uh, it's just amazing. Uh, many of your hurricanes uh disaster reliefs. Have gone to ham operators because they were the only ones that still had the capabilities of uh communicating. The team, again, uh, I'm with you. I'm not a. Uh, a techie in any way. I just uh familiar with the ability that the ham operators have. And the committee that was uh established headed up by uh Kent Trace. They have been doing an absolutely phenomenal job. They uh, they, they blew my mind um with somebody reporting that they've given back. We are presently working with. Um, one of the committee members is a Vernon ham operator, uh, part of the Vernon Fire Department. And they are also reaching out to uh Ellington Summers and trying to organize a uh. A county uh team. Uh, this is not to replace the fire radios in any way. This is just to give the chief a backup in the event that. God forbid a plane hit our, our communication tower, uh, we'd have another way of being able to communicate.
So basically Tammy, the last time we had a large search at Simsek Lake when we were looking for the body in the water. The cert ham operators were the only ones that were able to communicate because they were down in a hole wise. So. You obviously know me because I'm also the Talon County Coordinator for twenty six towns. If it's something that I can start dialoguing with Vernon and Summers because they have a pretty good team. We're hoping to expand it throughout the rest of Talon County because it gives a backup for a lot of other municipalities out in Talon County. So. Um, it's something where, you know, obviously we've taken a lot of lightning strikes in Talon, um, and you know, microbursts, whether it be the. You know, the towers or Bald Hill or Plains Road. So trying to think outside the box because these guys, a lot of them have their own. Uh, towers and radios at their houses. So um, obviously it's another tool in a tool bag. And if I have the staff that's already. Trained and I can save you money on training and budget money, you know, it's thinking outside the box.
And can I just add here that it is a federal license? You just, you can't just have anybody pick up the radio and use it. You, you need that license. Um, in order, because I'm a ham radio operator myself.
I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. They have to take a certified class and they end up getting a radio uh numbering assigned to them.
Right. Yeah. KC one IMP, if anybody cares. But yeah, even um. We're very fortunate to have a good working relationship with the Bears. Are they out of Manchester?
Yep.
Um, yeah, we have a great relationship with them. They offer training. Um, and that's where myself, my husband and my daughter got our license from. Um, and uh, Mr. Trice has been a wealth of help and, and. A knowledge. Um, he's doing a great job helping me make sure that I stay on top of what I need um and use my radio. So.
And they meet, they meet every Sunday night, Tammy, just as a, a cert, they uh, they talk about the ham stuff every Sunday night. So. We're, we've been trying to push this for the last couple of years.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So um. Then if, if you could tell me in the communications area, I know we jumped up last year and that are we, how are we doing on actuals in that one? Are we still? Ringing true to what we thought it would be?
Are you fire or ambulance?
I'm still on animal control.
We're, we're, we bought the stuff, it's, but it's, it's been installed in the uh vehicles. The only thing that I have not done is secured the contract with the uh nine one one dispatch center. And the reason being is because Astrid was looking to put it in their budget and Wellington was already paying for it. So I told Wellington not to, you know, either start the contract because why should we pay a contract fee at a time? a contract fee out of Talon in Willington if we're going to start merging? That should be a savings that the three towns should look at. So I have not, I've not started that contract. So that's the only thing that's left in that con, in the communications contract of the animal control.
So will you be doing that, you think, before the end of the fiscal year?
Depends how much you cut my budget this year.
Okay. Well, if I cut it this year, then see, like, that isn't how it works. You know, it's in there for last year too. It's a two-year savings there, John. All right, 194, fire prevention. Let's see. Dues and memberships at 750, when we typically spend 55. Do you guys have some new stuff coming up or is that for new people? There's a couple of, there's a couple of line items in this one here that just looked like they were higher than actuals, dues and membership, other services and training and development. Those were, and books and subscriptions. Those were like the ones that all look like you're not typically spending from an actuals perspective. So I was just wondering if you could kind of give me a little high level on that.
A lot of the dues come in after the year, but Rob, are you on the line tonight?
He was. Rob, is he still here?
I see the name in the, in the box. Yes.
I am.
Hey, Rob, how you doing?
Good, I'm okay.
Good.
So question was?
Dues and memberships. It's typically, if you look at the actual spend on it from a dues and memberships perspective, it's like $55, but for last year and this year, we've got about 750 in there. Have we had something increase or, or something new come on?
So what happens is we've got some IAAI communications that are required based on hours that are required for my certification. So that, you know, I guess that's probably my best explanation for that.
Okay. And then John, I'm assuming that you want him to answer all these ones on fire prevention?
You got him on a roll. I would keep going with them.
All right. Other services and fees. This one here is, this one here actually was, this is one where we're typically spending like a hundred dollars or so, and it's gone up to about 1,500 in the last, I don't know where we are from an actuals perspective, John, on that, because it went from like a hundred dollars for the last few years to 1,500 last year and we're budgeting flat this year. So I remember there was something.
Which one, which one, which line item?
I'm on page 194, line item for other services and fees.
So right now you're at 1455.
Okay. What do we change? There was something in here last year that, was this the, again, this was like, there was something that we specifically noted we were putting in here. So we're, we're on.
We put his vehicle in there and it actually just, just had it built last week because it went down for three days for, I think it was 675 or 800, Rob, your, when your vehicle went down. So the other services and fees, 90% of all the maintenance of that vehicle is paid out of my fire suppression budget.
Okay. So.
That was the thing last year that we added that we put in there. So then he has his own, I mean, right now he has, he has his own fuel budget in there.
Training and development, same question. It's typically around like 500 and it's a, it's actually, it's at 600, it's going to 600 next year. So we, we're comfortable with the 600 number. It's about what it was like in the prior years.
Yeah. So, you know, it's unfortunate.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the wrong, training and development went from like three to 400 to 1,000.
Yeah. Can you hear me or no?
Yep, yep.
So unfortunately, you know, this COVID thing makes a, makes a big deal of difference, right? So depends on when we can get together to, to make this happen or not with all the organizations that qualify me for fire marshal certification. So I do the best I can do for whatever is free. And then we plan for the worst.
Right. All right. So hopefully, do you, do you know if they're, they're going to get back, back on track with the certifications with the COVID release stuff? Have you heard anything about that? Because, you know, I'm sure that's, that's pretty pivotal to your role.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure not in, in the near future, but hopefully, you know, things are getting better. So hopefully within the next six months or so that, that does happen. But, you know, I can't promise that.
Right.
Tammy, under the, you said training's gone up, so the fire marshal training still has a thousand dollars.
Well, that was the question. It was like three or 400 in the past years.
Now, it's, it's kind of consistent and train, a thousand all the way through.
Are you looking at fire prevention? I'm looking at 585 for 17, 18, 440 for 18, 19, 300 for 19, 20, and then it jumps up to 1,000.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's, I know last year and this year was a thousand.
And same thing, John, with books and subscriptions. It's like around the 2,000, 1,500.
The books and subscriptions, the only thing that drives that driving factor, sorry, Rob, to trump on you, but the NFPA changes their fees every single, every other year. So we have to buy all the codes. And when the codes come out, correct me if I'm wrong or not, Rob, I think Carl can even answer this from his standpoint too. The code subscriptions change and we have to buy the hard copies electronically and printed copies.
Yeah, you have to buy a whole new code book.
Well, no, that, that's true. We, we belong to the subscription for NFPA. And we, you know, we need to follow whatever legislature provides for us to be the latest and greatest in the code compliance. Yeah.
A lot of that training stuff, I would say I can probably make adjustments because one of the part of, probably the increase was when we were going to the future to get the other staffing on of the inspectors or guys that I sent to school. So maybe I should have cut that a little bit. I'll be right honest with you. Maybe I should have cut that down to where it was years ago.
Well, we can, we can take a look at that.
Maybe that, maybe that'll pay for some of the part-time secretaries hours.
There you go. We're, we're going to bargain here. Never bargain with an accountant, John. All right, 197, fire suppression. What did I have on here? So, so what, what overtime is covered on this one? Is this the actual firefighters?
No, so you have half the firefighters and ambulance and you have half the firefighters in, in the fire suppression. So.
So, all right. So this is half of the career people.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I just, what I thought that I would just wanted to make sure because I was looking at the numbers and I was like, that's not everybody. So, all right.
So you have the captain and obviously one public safety officer, two public safety officers, the secretary, myself, and then obviously my, whatever, if you want to call it a stipend.
Yep. Okay, temporary help, $6,000 in temporary help. Can you refresh my memory again on what we're, what we're using the temporary help for, what that covers?
So the temporary help fills in when the career staff is out.
That's what I thought.
Yep. And obviously the temporary help is split into two different ways. Obviously I try to fill it with a firefighter EMT first. Obviously that, and then obviously if they can't fill it with that, we, we have an EMT and obviously the levels of funding for those two positions have not gone up over the last couple of years.
Okay. All right. I, I thought that's what it was, but I wasn't 100% sure. All right, service contracts on this line here. Again, it, it just jumped up last year to this year. Is this, this, which, the service contracts on this one? Which ones were these that went up?
So service contracts.
Are we okay on actuals for that? Because it was a big jump from the last year to this current year.
Yeah. So I just caution you guys, when you look at my service contracts, my service contracts are the annual requirements that I end up doing for Hurst Tool Maintenance, pump testing, servicing of pumps, ladder testing, fit testing, hose testing, chassis inspection, mutual aid support services, which is 750. And then obviously annual hose nozzle and pressure testing as well as the diver scuba equipment.
That's a lot of mandates.
Yep. These are all the FPA mandates. So I end up waiting till after the first of the year to do most of this testing. Because it's like the hose testing, I wait for the good weather because they use the front of the training center. They lay all the hose out. The ladder testing, we wait for good weather because then the guys can wash all the ladders after the, you know, obviously the winters and everything else and do the ladder testings. This is one line item that I will always caution every single council that is here. We have this annual testing. Those are the bare minimums to do the testing on all the hose ladders and everything else. It is budgeted nowhere in my budget. One length of hose is $650. One ladder is over $2,000. If you feel a bunch of hose, you could see a huge budget. You will see in my 4,600 account, which is the other equipment. I think I budget for $4,000 for hose replacement. We end up feeling a couple hoses every single year. A night like tonight, when the guys had, Carl, what did you have out? 800 feet of hose, 1,000 feet of hose out in the woods? I have no idea what's going to end up feeling for a pressure test hose when the hose testing come in. But we don't budget anywhere in our budget to replace ladders, hose, Hurst Tool equipment, Hurst Tool lines or anything else. So I caution the council and the, and the town management every single year where I don't budget for that. But if I have to cover that, that means that Mrs. Hancock has a bad day and says, well, you have to find it in your budget, John, and I gotta cut something else out or something else that we budgeted for, and it just rolls over from year to year. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, last question I have for you tonight, John, other services and fees. So we had about, about 11,000 in 17, 18, 18,000, 18, 19, and then 11,000 again, 19, 20. How are we doing on actuals for that? It jumped up to about 21,000 last year and we're, we're staying in that range. So are we good on that number? Where are we, where are we floating right now?
That's a very, that's a very hard number because that main category of other services and fees. Obviously that's the physical program. That's usually the bigger, the big ticket item that's in there as far as Department of Physicals. So that ranges from year to year. I can tell you that obviously membership has been very fluctuant throughout the year because of COVID. But I know Carl, correct me if I'm wrong or not, but I think we took in two or three, four members over the last month and a half. So obviously when they go for their physicals and everything else, it kind of fluctuates. But I just kind of gave you the explanation as far as the yearly physical for our department members. Some haven't gone to it. Some haven't been there. So, you know, you look at the budget numbers right now where we are. It's hard to say, but I bet you, you know, now that everybody's got all their shots, they'll probably end up going to get their, you know, vaccine. We're at $16,000 right now.
Okay. All right. Good that, John, you survived another budget year.
I was waiting for you to hit me on the trading thing. So the only like big item that really jumped in, in the, the overall was a trading one because I obviously had to buy a online platform with our NFPA trading. And that's where you see that 3,600 split between ambulance and fire. We're doing a lot of the trading and it's limited in the firehouses, but I am proud to say that all my staff are up to date with their bloodborne pathogens, all their KERMA training, all the sexual harassment training, the yearly trainings that are mandated. But you know, I think, I mean, I asked Carl the other day, he said, we're, we're right there. We're, we're, we're doing a great job. So I wish it was more. I could tell you that.
You guys always do a great job. I don't, I don't take that for granted. The last question that I have for you guys. So I'm good. Does anybody else have anything that they want to throw by public safety right now?
Wow.
Yeah, see?
I would just add that KERMA is definitely a great resource, having to take those courses for CERT that, you know, I, I wish there was more or if there are more, I definitely would like to, to take those. But the two that we take, the sexual harassment, the bloodborne pathogens, I think I completed a couple of weeks ago are very thorough.
Yeah. Steve, you can just go up onto the FEMA website and sign up for classes. You don't have to do them through KERMA.
Well, the KERMA ones are required by, yeah, you know, the FEMA ones are one time and good, good and go. But the KERMA ones obviously are required for employees from every division.
So thank you.
Lou, your hand's up.
Yeah, I just wanted to not so much ask, but to thank also Chief Laitel for the dive team that they have for, in public safety. Considering that I almost needed them last year during our polar plunge. And looking forward to possibly doing that again the next time. But anyway, thank you guys.
You know, we, we could have like prompted Bruce on the next polar swim there.
They needed, they needed training exercise. I'd be more than happy to have them meet you this weekend for a training exercise.
Throw Lou in the water and say, save him.
I think we've had enough training exercises, Bobby Meacham, thanks.
And I'm not going anywhere near cold water, like ever. So unless there's a bear chasing me. So sorry, I'll take your picture, but I ain't getting in.
I would have jumped in the lake today.
Today, yeah, today. No, no, because the water's still, no, 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 no.
It's warm enough.
Brenda, that's a lie. That's a lie.
It would have been my fourth year in a row. We're missing this year.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, that's it for me.
Carl, did you, did I cut you off or did Carl, did you have anything that I missed on the budget?
Not at all. I hit everything. The, the new training program that we have, just to mention it, it ties right in with KERMA. So it, it's sort of a, if we do a specific class through its fire rescue one, it's approved by KERMA also.
Oh, that's good. That's good. All right. Not seeing any other questions. Steve?
Sure thing. Steve Jones, I make a motion to adjourn at 9:47 PM.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, that's unanimous. Thank you guys. Have a great night. Thank you again for everybody for coming and everything that you do. Have a good night, everyone.